Mayor.
I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, October 20, 2022. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker. Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Miratado. Trustee Pochek.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance led by Cub Scout Pack 355.
Color guard attention. Color guard forward march. Color guard halt. Color guard post colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one wish, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard return to rank. Color guard about face. Color guard forward march. Color guard dismiss.
We can sit, Mayor.
We now move to be petitions and communications. Recognition of Cub Scouts Pack 355 and question and answer session with the village board.
How and when did Glendale Heights start?
When did it become a village?
When did Glendale Heights become a village?
It became a village about sixty years ago.
Nineteen fifty-nine.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If you received a million dollars, how would you spend it in Glendale Heights?
We will make a lot of roads, you know, parks, you know, other senior centers, kids, recreations, ground, and et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
How do you get on the village board? Are you elected?
Yes, we are all elected. One mayor and six trustees and one village clerk.
Thank you.
How did you, how did you become, get to be the mayor?
As I mentioned, is elected mayor and village clerk. They run from all over the village and trustee, they run from their own district. We have six trustees, means six, this village is divided into six districts. Each trustee represents his or her district.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
What's your hardest job of being a mayor?
Oh, it's everywhere. Step one, you announce, then there's a lot of problem, you know. Then you go on campaigning, then after that, if there is a litigation, you work within that visual system. And then there is an election, you win, you know, lose, then certification by village, DuPage Election Commission and oath, then trouble stress again, you know, if you are new, lot of old guys, you know, they are there. So anyway, I enjoyed that, you know.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Why?
Yes, what do a board member and...
What do a board man...
Say what do a board member...
What do a board manner? And mayor do?
What does a board member and the mayor do?
Oh, they do a lot of stuff, you know, basically, board member, they take care of money, they control money and mayor, little executive powers like, you know, Congress and, you know, president, you know. But over here, mayor is less than president, presidential power, you know. Basically, they were supposed to be work together.
What is an important issue in Glendale Heights that you're working on?
When I became mayor, there were a lot of problems with the home inspections. So I appointed committee for home inspection and that committee worked very well. They brought at least fifty percent, more than fifty percent rules and regulation down, means they eliminated those unnecessary rules and regulations. So now is easy inspection process, number one. Number two, I, we board pass, you know, anti-apartheidism policy. So there was, you know, I shouldn't say, but must say, you know, former mayor, trustees, their families were all on the payroll, you know. So that has been stopped now, no more new hiring. So we are working on that and jobs are given on merit only. You don't have to know mayor or trustee or any village employee to get job. You take test, appear before panel and you are done.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And I want to add one more. This year, we are constructed, means village, ten roads, you know. This is double of the size what village used to do every years. In every year, they used to do, you know, reconstruct four to five roads. This year, we are reconstructing or resurfacing ten roads. That's first time in the history of Glendale Heights. And we spent four point five million dollar and we used to spend like two point four million, two point four on roads, you know. So this is double of that.
How, how can the scouts and other kids get involved in local government in the community?
If you realize you are doing what we are supposed to do, what you are supposed to do, you know. You are participating today, you know, tonight. And thank you for coming, you know.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
What is the most challenging part of being a board member or mayor?
Most challenging part is how you can work as a team, teamwork, you know. It's very important.
Thank you.
Your question is a great question, you know.
Why do you want to be on the board and be mayor?
Why did I want? I wanted to bring changes and so far, a lot of changes has been done and we are in the process, working together, mayor and board.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You like your job?
Yes, very. I do like. Thank you for asking.
Trustee Light. Guys, I wanted to show my appreciation to you. Part of my district is Ruskin Park. And I had noticed the great amount of work you guys did there with the flower bed that you had put in. I really appreciated it and I saw this, I wanted to reach out and make sure you guys got recognized for it. You know, you did an awesome, awesome job at it. I know how hard it is because I can't plant anything and keep it alive, but you guys managed to do that fantastically. So please, you know, from my heart, the board's heart and everyone else within the village, we really appreciated what you did. I didn't want it to go unnoticed, so please, thank you very much.
If any other trustee wants to say something...
For all the hard work that the Cub Scouts have put into Ruskin Park, you have awards up there, I think, for each one of the Cub Scouts?
Yes, we have awards for those, all those volunteers, those young people, very young people and very young ladies. And I will call their name so you can come and collect, you know, your reward, you know. First is a cup, okay, Benjamin Ballard. Please come forward. Second, Gabriel Borazowski.
Who's next?
Number three, Benjamin Bettillon. Elizabeth Bettillon. Jacob Betty Lion. And Gabriel Borazowski. Nicole's Betty Lion. Sofia Lopez. Cameron Lundquist. Wade Sanders. John Turek. Jacob Vargas. Joshua Vargas.
Newest scout, so he didn't even make it on my list. This is Joseph DiChristofano.
Stephanie Betty Lion. Stephanie...
That's her.
Annette Johnson. Nicole Mancor. Jennifer Turek. One award for Cub Scout Pack 355.
If the board could probably just stand up, maybe David can just get a picture right there. If the board could just stand and get a picture with all the Cub Scouts?
And congratulations, every young man and young lady. Kimberly Lescas. I'm sorry.
Make sure everybody gets in the picture. Block your face.
Yeah, show your face, though. Can you get him in?
Thank you.
And number two, community announcements. Trustee Schmidt, please.
With the arrival of the fall season, the village of Glendale Heights, along with the Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are at least fifteen feet from any structure, which includes fences and picnic tables. For more information, please contact the Glen Side Fire Protection District at six three zero six six eight five three two three or the Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at six three zero eight nine four nine zero eight zero. During the months of October and November, parking restrictions will be in effect from eight AM to four PM due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact the Public Works Department at six three zero two six zero six zero four zero. Thank you.
Trustee Siddiqui.
We would like to remind residents that per village code, do not rake or move leaves or yard waste into the village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any debris for safe driving. Yard waste collection occurs on the same day as regular waste and recycling pickup. The final collection day for yard waste will be November thirtieth, December first and December second, depending on when your usual garbage and recycling pickup occurs. If you have any questions, please call Republic Services at eight four seven nine eight one zero zero nine one.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. Come out to the Sports Hub on Friday, October twenty-eighth, from six thirty PM to nine PM for pajama movie night featuring Coco. So put on your pajamas, wrap yourself up in your fluffiest blanket and join us for movie night. Pajama movie night is free. Admission and concessions will be available for purchase. For more information, please call the Sports Hub at six three zero two six zero six zero six zero. The Frights are back and better than ever this year at the Haunted Trail on Saturday, October twenty-ninth at Ruskin Park. Groups will be led on a guided tour from six PM to nine PM through all trails, six hair-rising scenes, which are home to the most menacing and creepy creatures Glendale Heights has ever seen. Beware, you may encounter a few surprises along the way. The tours will run every ten minutes. Kid-friendly tours with less interaction with the creatures will run from six PM to six thirty PM. Register by October twenty-eighth for a discounted rate of five dollars and for residents, for residents and ten dollars for non-residents. Those looking to pay October twenty-ninth at the Haunted Trail will pay a resident rate of eight dollars and non-resident rate of thirteen dollars. For more information, please contact Sports Hub at six three zero two six zero six zero six zero. Thank you.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is proud to present Brittany's Trees, a local tradition and nationally-recognized organization that celebrates the holidays in memory of Brittany Veline. Brittany was a young girl from Carol Stream who loved Christmas trees, but unfortunately passed away in two thousand and five from a heart condition. Money raised from the sale of Brittany's trees goes to support the Sudden Arrhythmia Death Syndrome's foundation. Officers will be delivering and setting up Brittany's Trees on Saturday, November twenty-sixth. To order your Brittany's Trees, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. And for more information, please call the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at six three zero two six zero six zero seven zero. The village of Glendale Heights is getting in the Halloween spirit. Halloween is on Monday, October thirty-first and we would like to remind residents that trick-or-treating hours are from three PM to seven PM. Also, on Halloween evening, we invite children fifteen and under to come and trick-or-treat at Safety Town Halloween for a safe and family-friendly event. Safety Town Halloween runs from four PM to seven PM. For more information on Safety Town Halloween, please contact Tanya McCo at six three zero nine zero nine five four five nine.
Trustee Pochek, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be on Saturday, November fifth, at the Center for Senior Citizens from ten AM to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any commitments, comments, suggestions or questions for the village president or the village board, please call the village president's office anytime, six three zero nine oh nine five three oh two. Please join the village board and the village of Glendale Heights Police and Fire Personnel and Glendale Heights VFW Post twenty-three seventy-seven for a ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park as we honor all military personnel past and present. The Veterans Day Ceremony will begin at eleven AM on Veterans Day, November eleventh. The event includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute and a tribute to our fallen warriors. Please note that all village offices will be closed on Friday, November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day. For more information, please call the village president's office, six three zero nine oh nine five three oh two. Thank you.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Stop by the Center for Senior Citizens on Thursday, November the seventeenth, from nine AM to five PM to get a jumpstart on your holiday shopping at the annual craft fair and bake sale. Shop for an assortment of handmade jewelry, clothing, ornaments, tote bags and other crafts made by members of the Center for Senior Citizens. Our members will also be baking some delicious treats for a bake sale. All proceeds for the bake sale will be going back to future programming at the Center for Senior Citizens. For more information, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at six three oh two six oh six oh five oh.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Proclamations. We have the following proclamations. A proclamation to proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. A proclamation to proclaim the week of October twenty-three to thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, as Red Ribbon Week. A proclamation to proclaim October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, as Halloween Trick or Treat in the village of Glendale Heights. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamation. Any objection, no, so...
Go for it.
See, public discussion of agenda items. We now go on to public discussion...
I wanted to make, can we remove, before we go into public discussion? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna remove number four on the consent agenda.
To new business, old business number one.
Old business number one.
Mayor, that'll show up as number four on new business for you, I think.
Consent agenda, D.
Mayor, was anybody public... Hold on one second. Is there any public comment?
No, no.
And an agenda item only?
Okay.
Chris Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. I want to comment about number seven, a resolution, opposition to the Illinois Safety, Fairness and Equity Act today. I ask that the board reject this resolution. First of all, the trustee that proposed it last meeting is not here today. The second thing is there are still amendments going on to it. So it's kind of difficult to understand the whole seven hundred-plus pages of this act without seeing all the amendments. So in reality, you're not voting on something that can truly be stated considering that they're still negotiating it. I think this actually should be left for our politicians in Springfield to deal with. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue. I have a question...
I have a question about number five, about the tax levy. When will you decide what the levy is going to actually be? Because you raised it four percent last year, supposedly because of that loss of revenue from that big company. But you've almost made it up in traffic violations this year through the, what's that program called, chief? With the trucks?
The commercial vehicle enforcement.
So through commercial vehicle enforcement. So when you're looking at next year's levy, that four percent, since you're back to break even, are you going to take that four percent off our tax bill? So that's my one question. My second question is, under new business for the drive-through permitting alcohol, can a drive-through serve alcohol if they have a drive-through?
We don't have a license for that.
But that's what's asking, isn't it? Drive-through serving alcohol beverage?
There's two conditional uses. A restaurant serving alcohol and a restaurant with a drive-through. So it's not alcohol in a drive-through. It's actually allowing them to have a drive-through.
Well, you wouldn't be able to buy alcohol through there. Okay. And then you moved number four to old business. Is there going to be discussion on that?
Correct. Discussion is the time now for the public.
Well, my question would be then to you, chief. At the last meeting, you said there'd been, I don't understand how you could be voting on something that there's been no study done. You said, and I was talking to Mohammed about, you said there was a speeding, a speed limit study, but not a traffic study, which is, wouldn't that be more of what you're looking to enforce for these people? When, I mean, I went down that street. That street is really wide. I can't imagine the parking would affect them. But you said that a study had not been done. And here it's two weeks later, and it's on the board agenda.
You're correct. We have done it since that I study about accidents that have occurred from twenty eighteen to present, and the answer is zero. There's been zero auto crashes on Western Avenue. Absent North and Western. On Western Avenue, the actual side street, there's been zero crashes.
So none on Western? I know about the big ones at Western and North Avenue, but not on actual Western?
That's correct.
So is that part of your discussion for this evening, then?
I believe so, correct.
The reason it was taken off the consent agenda.
Okay, okay. And then, when does the, for the tax levy, then? When will you guys make that decision? I know it's a little early for next year's levy, but four percent was a big increase for us.
We would be proposing to bring a presentation. This is me.
Hi, Bill.
To the board at the next meeting. And then the mayor would call for a public hearing on the tax levy the meeting following that. So the second meeting in November. Presentation next meeting, and then a public hearing the following meeting.
All right, thank you.
Just for the record, Ed, the commercial vehicle enforcement doesn't come close to to the revenues from the company that left.
Well, I checked, and they said that they're at seven hundred thousand for this year. McKinison was a million. That's pretty close.
They're not close. The number that you just mentioned is not correct. But that's a different, it's an argument for another day.
Well, I, you know, I called and checked. That's what I was told. And that's a lot of money. I mean, it gets us close to the lost million. So, you know, four percent. I don't want the four percent being tacked on, and then you got an additional million to play with.
I think you'll be okay with what the levy is going to be. But just for the record on number one for one, it's just not the same.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? None?
Good evening, everybody. And I just want to start by saying I'm not trying to push my luck. I just want a little clarification. Item number four, with regards to Western Avenue, is taken off the agenda this evening?
It's taken off the consent agenda, meaning that it's not, there's no consent to it. It's going to be voted on separately.
It's going to be voted on separately?
Under old business number one.
Tonight?
Tonight.
So we still get a chance to come up and speak?
This is your time to speak now.
This is my time to speak now? Okay, all right. I spoke to the officer. I just want to repeat what the other gentleman said. There's been no accidents on Western Avenue. I've had some real-life experience the last couple of days. Yesterday, I had a roof put on my house. There were four vehicles that showed up along with a dumpster. And I just want to say that they would have had no place to park had there been the restriction put in place. Also, if we are forced to park in our driveways, we'll be playing musical chairs with our cars. As you can see, I broke my ankle a few days ago. I'd have to go out, not necessarily always in good weather, and jockey cars around. All the neighbors that would be doing that would be blocking the street while we're doing that. It'll be worse than parking on the street. And then just to add, if you're going to ask the residents along Western Avenue to make a concession in any way, shape, or form, I'd like to know what concessions the residents of Greenbrier are making. Point would be the street that's blocked off, the additional street that provides egress into Greenbrier that's blocked off. I know there was some talk about concern about emergency vehicles being unable to get through. You only have one access point into that neighborhood. Egress is the very basics of safety. If that entrance is blocked off for any reason, emergency vehicles can't get into that neighborhood, even though there's a street there that's got a gate, a locked gate on it. Sorry.
Take your time.
I lost my train of thought there for a minute.
Do you want water? Water, water?
No, I'm fine, thank you. I also want to point out that the residents of Greenbrier also enjoy parking on the street, even in front of a park in that neighborhood. There's a curve in that road also. I'd also like to point out there are multiple alternatives for the residents of Greenbrier besides the street that's got the gate locked on it to get into their neighborhood. They can take Bloomingdale to Shorewood and take Shorewood in. It takes them all the way to the stop sign to turn in. They can turn off of North Avenue onto Evergreen. They can turn onto Newton Avenue, going right. There's multiple options if they're concerned about the bend in the road and the cars being parked. So I don't understand how the residents of Western Avenue are being penalized or asked to make concessions with their parking privileges when there's other options available. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
Sir, may I have your name, please?
Thomas Foley, F O L E Y.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Kesar Chishhti. I am a resident and owner of ten sixty-four Greenbrier Drive. I live in the Greenbrier community. So like, I came to know about this discussion of parking or the Western Avenue. So I'd like to say a few things. I do agree that we enjoy the park. Like, the residents of Western Avenue should be given a chance to park their cars on the road. But on the other end, if you go on that road, there is a curve. And because of the forest on the right side, there are so many weeds, bushes, and trees growing and coming to the road. So the drivers, which are most of the time driving fast, like, there is a blind spot when the cars are coming from the other side. There are a few seconds where you have to make a decision to stop, slow down, or take a corrective action. And when the cars are parked on that curve, just on that curved side, that's like a critical situation sometimes. I know there are no accidents. But one suggestion I have is to maybe the whole forest needs some trimming towards the road. There is a couple houses in front of that. I know the grasscutting company do a good job in cleaning the forest on the Western Avenue, but they leave the bushes and weeds in front of those two houses which are on the curve. So if they do a good job of cutting that, trim it five, ten feet away from the road, that will make the road visibility more better. And this way, whoever is coming from the Greenbrier side or from the North Avenue side, they will see the oncoming car much in advance, and they can reduce the speed. And secondly, on that stop sign on Western Avenue and Second Avenue, whatever, Second Avenue, right? So Second Place on that one. That also, on the right side, there's a lot of trees and leaves, and it stops the view. So people, there are some habitual people, people who habitually don't stop at the stop sign. You cannot, they're from our neighbors, and they do it. But on the other end, whoever wants to stop there, because of the trees, it's stopping the view. So you have to go a little bit front, front, and then now you're in the, on the street now. So then it also sometime puts you in a difficult situation. So overall, that forest, I think, on the Western Avenue and on the Second Place, it needs to be trimmed away from the street. No cutting of trees, but trimmed away from the street, maybe five, ten feet. And there is a security camera there on the Second Avenue, and that is totally covered with the trees also. That security camera, which is there for safety. So I think overall, that area needs cleaning. Maybe, I appreciate trustee Assim doing a good job there, putting lights there and doing things based on the feedback of the community. The lights have helped us in the nighttime see the cars. And if somebody is standing there, so we are not hitting them. So my suggestion is make that forest a little bit cleaner, trim it from the corners, and also move that safety camera from there onto the entry point of the community. Because there was a robbery recently on Greenbrier Drive, and that camera does not catch that. It was supposed to be moved last winter, but the soil was hard. They said we will move it, but it has not been done. So maybe we can get some update on that also. So I do, I'm in favor that our neighbors should be given a chance to park. And also, at the same time, just on the corner, something can be done to make it a little bit better. Maybe widen that road in that corner a little bit, or maybe make it more clear to see so that blind spot is not there. I think whatever you have done, it has improved the situation, but it will further improve it.
Thank you for your input. And, yes, next?
How you doing? My name is Frank Perez. I live at one nine seven hundred, Western Avenue. I've been there for about thirteen years. I'm a truck driver for twenty. What the gentleman was telling about rubbish on the side of the road, where you guys put the last light or the first light towards North Avenue, that section is blocked off by rubbish. I took a picture. I sent it to you guys for the village, so you guys see it. Also sent videos how people will go, will speed up the hill while kids are coming off the bus. I got kids that walk down the bus from Third Avenue. So if you guys get a chance to look at those videos and those pictures, you'll see the rubbish that could be cleared out. So there won't be no blind spot. Because if you come from North Avenue coming in, the blind spot's not there because it's wide enough. You're on the right side of the street. When you're coming from prior to North Avenue, the rubbish is on the right side, so you can't really see that then. It's a huge blind spot because, yeah, the rubbish is there. Other than that, the parking, I park on the street. That slows down all the cars' speed. When there's no cars there, they're going to fly. We don't have no sidewalks on that area, so the kids are not safe. Nor are the adults that are walking up and down the hills. Because during the day, there's a lot of old folks that come around and walk around. I work graveyard at the post office. So when I'm at home, I get to see all this stuff unfold. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, thanks. Chief, are you going to send cop over there randomly?
Oh, yeah, there's actually a, after the traffic study, there's a traffic patrol over there.
I have a comment from Yusuf Mohammed on Zoom.
Hello. Any guys there, me?
Go ahead.
My name is Yusuf Mohammed. I am the resident on the Greenbrier side. And a few things. Number one, you know, this issue has been going on for quite a while. And as a matter of fact, I've been a victim of this intersection. My car was rear-ended due to the speeding and the blind spot. So I agree that the issue is two-part. It's just not the blind spot or the parking on the street. It's also the speeding, which mainly is done by my neighbors. You know, I'll be blunt and honest. So the suggestion I have is to do two things. Number one, the strict enforcement of speeding on Western Avenue and the parking just on the curve. So if we can remove the, so there are days, like the last few days, I've noticed there were no cars barging Western by the edge. And it was fairly easy to move, go on both sides. So if only the edge area can be made a no parking zone, I think it will make a big difference. But I also agree with the residents that the issue is the speeding. So Mr. Mayor and the board, I would, first of all, I would, I think it's the best idea to have the study done, professional study done, instead of taking our words. Maybe a third party or the professional company come out and see what is happening. And the second thing is, And the second thing is, this was done, and Mr. Mayor, this to your attention, this was done by the previous administration, and honestly, they did it to accommodate the dealership, because it used to be fairly straight to get in, get out of the North Avenue. They promised us that they're gonna put a traffic light, and then that was just a lame promise. So the point is, village has to do some serious study, and, and find a way to make this easier for both, for the residents on, on Western Avenue, and for us in the neighborhood side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
I also have a comment from Mohammed Choudry.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Choudry, I live in the neighborhood, Coventry Circle. So I have actually issues with this Western Avenue, especially the way now it is built. So when it was previously, when it was not built and it was straight road, there was no raised curb on either side of it. So the raised curb, especially on the forest side, it has created like hazard for the car, because if the car coming from opposite side, because of avoiding any accident, or avoiding any parked car, if they decide not to give the way, there is no escape, other than hitting the curb and flipping the car over. So I think there should be some study comparing with the old scenario and the new scenario as well, that how we can make the situation better. And additionally, some of the busy weekends, like, I don't know if this is, a lot of guests come, that this road is blocked, and this side, and the western side of the Western Avenue is blocked all the way to the North Avenue. There's hardly any way we can get onto the Western Avenue, taking right turn, or the left turn. So, I, I think it need to be studied, because we are not having a lot of accidents, maybe that is, we are lucky, but some people are not so lucky getting accidents as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, yes.
Kim Darlin, 1053 Greenbrier. I know neighbors, I know you're mad. Can we possibly just drop the speed limit? Did we think of that? George?
All of our speed limits are 25, so I can't see. I guess what we'll do, we're just gonna hammer people. I think I'm just gonna send an email, as soon as I can get this to work, and that's what we're gonna do. So anybody speeds is gonna get a ticket, and whatever officers. The hard thing about committing to this is, like I said in the last board meeting, just as it's Western, there is 50 other streets in Glendale Heights.
Exactly.
Who have the same issue, so I can never guarantee 24/7 traffic control, but when they're out there, we're just gonna give a lot of tickets, so. I think, and hopefully, if it is the people from Greenbrier, they get the message, don't speed.
It's us speeding, George, so please, don't be sitting there. Cause I'm gonna be the one paying tickets every week. So if we were to just drop the speed limit, the road is wide enough, I know you want no parking on it, Mohammed, but the road is wide enough, if we can just drop the speed limit, the problem with that is, if you put no parking there, it's a free-for-all. And you think 25 is bad, you can get up to 50 before you even hit Third Street. So that's just gonna make it worse, but have at it.
Who's the next, you know? Who was first raising hand, you know? The lady? Okay, yes ma'am, go ahead. And next is, sorry, you, you know, you are the next.
My name's Lisa Mertz, I live on Western Avenue. I'm wondering, I've heard other people propose excellent ideas, cutting the shrubbery back, I believe that would help quite a bit, limiting parking altogether. I don't personally park on the street, and I seldomly have guests that need to, but it seems to me, some of the residents pretty much must park on the streets, they come home from work, would they be expected to park a block away and walk home? Maybe park in Greenbrier and walk home from there? It, it just seems like we should come up with some solution, other than eliminating all parking. But as I was listening to other folks' proposals, has anyone considered having a couple of well-marked speed bumps?
Answer that.
Okay, mention lower, you know, speeding.
We did that once before in Glendale Heights, and what happened is, we put them on, and I don't even, everybody remembers this, we had an industrial park, so they put them adjacent to the industrial park, so the trucks would not drive through it. Cars drove through there, the cars were getting damaged, people said, we need to get these things out. We have zero speed bumps in Glendale Heights. There's other designs that you can put in there, other environmental or weight designs that we can put to slow the traffic down. As somebody had mentioned, I think it was Tom, when you have cars out there, parked out there, it causes the traffic to slow down, it really does, because it makes the roads smaller, the smaller the road, the more careful people have to drive. So the other option would be to put an island in the middle, or somewhere, so people have to drive around a curve to, again, so now you're hitting the curve thing. But to put speed bumps in there is gonna cause more damage to cars, and you're gonna have more arguments coming back, that my car is getting damaged, there's no cars out there right now, so that would come right back to me again, and that's.
Do you recall how well those speed bumps were marked? Was there signage, were they yellow striped, would be plenty clear, where if they say, this has damaged my car, they'd have no recourse, because it was clear? You had evidence that it was plenty clear and obvious, it was.
Sometimes, sometimes that works, and sometimes that doesn't work. When the more you tra, travel on a roadway, the more that paint's gonna come off, and even, I'm not even gonna bring up the snowplow issue, because that's another part of it, you have to plow the roads too, and that causes a real problem with that too. So you would have, actually have to have it, so you take out the speed bumps during the winter season, which would be another issue altogether.
Besides the markings, how about street signs? A sign that indicates where it's at, like when there's construction, you see signs that say bump.
That's, that's a lot to put all over Glendale Heights, I am telling you right now, that.
Just two on Western Avenue, instead of a little bit of parking.
But like I said earlier, for every Western Avenue, I am telling you, this is the truth, you, there is 25, 30 other Western avenues in Glendale Heights, and you're gonna run into the same issues. Speed bumps, I definitely would not recommend speed bumps, when, like I said earlier, when you get become a sergeant, you get sent to Northwestern, they put you through all these traffic study things, they advise against doing speed bumps, just because of the traffic that you will wreck a car more than you will help reduce the traffic, so.
Okay, just if you could consider some of those other options, as opposed to eliminating parking, I think that would be wise and fair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes.
This is Kesar Chitthi again. I have a comment for police chief. When you are doing these studies, the speeding studies, and I know in our neighborhood, some studies were done, and you did something on Western, the, there's, I, I think, there's a flaw in that study. One thing is, it's just monitoring on one way. So when somebody's entering, not even entering, when they're already ahead of the curve, that's, that was monitoring their speed, when they were already on the straight road, and that monitor gives me alert, let's say, my, my speed is, let's say, 35, 35, suddenly I lower it down, and then there's a stop sign next to it. So next time I'm passing by, I will slow down in that area, because I know there's speed getting monitored, and it flashes me. So it, it is a temporary behavior change, as, as long as it's there, that maybe whoever is driving behind me, they see, oh, I'm driving 50, 40, whatever. And I know nobody from your side, you're monitoring, but you're not monitoring me, anonymously, you're saying somebody was driving 40 or 50. Secondly, and it was not monitoring whoever was exiting the community, rushing.
Not to interrupt you, sir, but just let the board know, this is his second time speaking, he has passed his five minutes.
Okay, so I can just wrap up. So, so maybe there's a way to discreetly monitor the, doing the study, and for both ways at the same time, that will help it.
It does, it picks up both traffic, so it picks up north and southbound, the traffic goes away and comes to, and that's what it puts in the study. The, the idea behind those speed signs is just so, like you said, so when people see that, they should slow down. Unfortunately, in that area, people didn't slow down, and it did show that people were speeding in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, first over here, yes.
Yes, yes, sir.
How you all doing? I'm a resident of Northern, Western Avenue as well, and.
Can you state your name, please?
T. Jackson. I'm from West, I'm a resident on North, Western Avenue as well, and just listening tonight from, especially the first three gentlemen that spoke their concerns and, and solutions, there, a lot of people have shared the same concerns, as well as very, very, very reasonable solutions to this. My, my major concern is my, my children's safety. If there is that, that, excuse me, if there is that restriction put in place, it's gonna, like the gentleman said before, it's gonna basically be a free-for-all for everybody driving up and down that street, my children coming back and forth from school and everything, I can't have that. Also, a lot of people haven't really thought about how so, how personally and socially that would impact the residents on North Avenue as well, basically giving them, giving up, them giving, them having their rights and privileges taken away from, of speak, of parking on the, on residents, excuse me, parking on the street, that would take away basically their social life, they wouldn't have any, any visitors or anything like that, because where are they gonna park at? You know what I mean? A lot of people, not a lot, but various people spend time working on their, improving their property, you know, how are they gonna have, you know, workers working on their housing and stuff like that? It just, it, to me, that's a real major concern. Thank you.
Any, anyone else, you know, new guy? Okay, yes, sure. And you are the last, you know?
He has about one minute left. That's all I need. Don't, don't start the clock till I get there, please.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we settle this like neighbors. Your slogan is a proud and progressive community for all. So why don't we try living by that creed, and say, residents of Greenbrier, do the speed limit down our block. That's not too much to ask, you're not losing any time over that short stretch of road. Residents on Western Avenue, park on the street when you have to, only when you have to. Okay? Police Department, enforce the speed limit. Village of Glendale Heights, cut back some of that brush, so there isn't a blind spot. We can all do a little bit, right? We can all do a little bit and, and make this better. I mean, we, we have no accidents on the road, so that's gonna be hard to improve upon, but maybe everybody walks away a little happier. My property's not devalued as a result, the rest of the people on Western Avenue, their property isn't devalued, try selling a house with no parking in front of it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We will do our best, you know, believe me.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Is there anybody else? Just before we move on.
Done, that was the last, you know, so they are repeating, you know, so I think we should.
One question. Lisa says that the lights that were installed on Western are shining into her bedroom, could we get those looked at? Yes, thank you.
We will proceed forward. Consent agenda. You have the consent agenda before you. What do you, Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Yeah, trustee Light, do you have a motion for number four?
He just requests it to be removed, it doesn't need to be my formal motion.
Okay.
Picture, I can just remove it, so we're ready.
Consent agenda. One, approval of regular board meeting minutes of October 6, 2022. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 6, 2022. Three, approval of accounts payable listing October 20th, in the amount of $1,986,769.90. Four is move the old business number one. Five, resolution determining the estimated property taxes to be levied for the 2022 tax year of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an integral agreement between the County of DuPage and the Village of Glendale Heights, in connection with community development block grant funds for the water main improvement projects, CD 22-05, North Avenue and East Schubert Avenue. Seven, resolution in opposition to the Illinois Safety, Fairness and Equity Act, the Safety Act. Eight, resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number one, final, for the water, water main replacement project phase two in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Nine, a motion to approve pay request number one to Johnson Paving Company for the 2022 street program, in a total amount not to exceed $1,594,354.54. Ten is approval of consent items.
Yes. Trustee Schmidt.
I move adoption of the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
And trustee Light.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Now we move to old business. We will go to number four of consent agenda.
It's number, old business number one?
Old business number one.
But you could read what it says.
Yeah. And ordinance to amend section seven-eight-four entitled, number, no parking at any time, exceptions of chapter eight, entitled Traffic Schedules of Title VII, entitled Motor Vehicle and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Parking Restrictions on Western Avenue, ordinance 2022-64.
There's no comment, sir.
Can I, is it possible that we can add something, one more item in the agenda?
It is not possible, sir. Under Illinois law, it is not possible. You guys do have a motion?
So moved?
Trustee Light, and trustee Pojek, second.
What was the motion?
To approve it, but we're gonna discuss and vote on this, if it was as read, correct? We have to approve as read right now. Now we can do the discussion, right?
Well, it'd be discussion.
Discussion, discussion, and he, yes.
I, growing up on, well, I basically raised my kids up on Fullerton, Fullerton is, is like Western, it's a very fast-paced street. I saw a lot of, I went down near Western, a lot of cars were moving quite fast. I do know that parked cars on Fullerton do slow the traffic down for me, I've seen it. I have to say, no parking where you guys are at would be really difficult. I was proposing the exact same thing, a couple of gentlemen said, who owns the park that's to the, to the east of that, that wetland area? Is that ours, Doug?
The curve and the.
Behind the dealership, everything that's with the wetland area back there. I, I would like to get that stuff cut back, because it was protruding quite a bit, cut back not only, and cut up higher, allowing a little bit more visibility.
It's in my notes.
Okay, and then if it, I would like to propose maybe a, a no parking north of the very last house, where the property's at, allowing them to park at that house, but that curve is a very long curve, and that wide entry does give a person that ability to get going a little bit faster, so if there's no parking in that curve area, north of the last house, the property line, north of there, I think it would be a benefit, along with trimming the trees back and knocking them down, I think it would save a lot of stuff. And more traffic enforcement for that area, big time, would be really beneficial. I know what Mohammed's trying to do, you know, he's trying to protect everybody on there, and, you know, it's hard, it's very difficult, but I think that might be a, a good idea, just that north of the last house, allowing the parking, because it does slow the cars down on North Avenue. And I've seen one car get hit, I was cutting the grass, and all of a sudden, a car in front of me was moved 30 feet away, because they were speeding, and they were distracted driving, so it can be dangerous.
Trustee Siddiqui, yes.
Yeah, so just wanna clarify that this idea was brought up by my residents, so that's why I come to Chief Pipers and Mr. Flint, to, to do some study, and then they say, okay, we can have a non-parking, but the gentlemen from the, or the neighbors from the Western Avenue have a valid concerns, and we all recognize that, and I really like Mr. Light's idea, that maybe if we can, you know, do some trimming those trees, and maybe that curve, because that curve is really dangerous. I lived in that neighborhood, beside, you know, speeding, I would say that it's not only us, there is a Dodge dealership which do the test drive in that neighborhood. I have seen the, the dealership number plate cars which are driving over there, so it's not fair just to say that it's only Greenbrier's people. And, so maybe, you know, and I, I'm sorry, sir, what's your name? Tom, I really agree with you, like, you know, we all are neighbors, and if we can do something, you can do something, you know, and I believe it's, it's a very valid suggestion from Mr. Light, that maybe if, just for that curve, if we can have a non-parking there, then, you know, you guys have a plenty parking there, and, and we can.
Under, under normal conditions, yes, but if we have guests, no, and, and under normal circumstances, there's nobody parking in, in that area anyways.
I mean.
There's never anybody parked in that area. North, north of the last property line, there's nobody ever parked there.
No, I'm talking about the house, the first house.
No, I was talking, I was talking north of the last.
Okay.
North of this last house, to the, to North Avenue.
Yeah, there's nobody parked there anyways, but when we have gatherings, and, and other people have gatherings, they, they do park there, but that's, that's not like every weekend, that's not that frequent, where it becomes an issue. I mean, I'm sure they're having parties in Greenbrier, I'm sure they're having parties in other areas where there's an overflow parking, I get it, not everybody likes it, but we're neighbors.
Sure.
You know, that's part of having a home, that you have the, you have that privilege of doing that, having guests over, having a good time, they got a place to park. I mean, I can't, we can't bust people in for our gatherings.
Uh, yes, trustee Schmidt, please.
Uh, I think that the no parking should be extended all the way along there. I'm sorry, no, no parking extended all the way along, because what I just saw on Google Maps here, if that underbrush is cut back, that should provide plenty of warning, plenty of time for people to slow down as they're approaching each other. I do think it would be a unreasonable bear, burden to put on the residents to say, well, up to here, I can park, but. up to here I can park, but past here, no. So I, I couldn't, I can't support a, a no parking north of the boundary there.
Trustee project.
And chief, this is for you. If you can get you or one of your upper staff going over to the Chrysler Dodge dealer and tell them no more test driving along that street. I think that would help a lot of the residents.
Yeah, we'll do that. I resent, uh, putting out to the, um, administrative staff to enforce, increase enforcement, traffic enforcement. But I'll have the beat sergeant go to the Dodge dealership and talk to them about that, too.
I appreciate it, thank you, and I think the residents will be happier.
Good job, good job, chief. Uh, anybody else? Mary Schroder?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm just asking you if you, okay. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
No.
Peter, can, what, what is the motion on?
Yeah, the motion is to approve it, to allow no parking.
So I think maybe.
You misunderstood, okay, so we can read what you know.
We, we need to, there needs to be a, a motion made for denial or approval.
Denial, denial.
There was a motion made for approval. But if it, if it fails, it's not approved.
Right, so I think it needs to be explained that the motion is up to approve. If you don't want to approve it, you need to vote in the negative.
Right, so.
Would you like to withdraw your vote?
Yes, I do.
Mary, would you like to withdraw your vote? Okay.
Mary, do you understand? It's, it's to approve it, so if you don't want it approved, you need to vote no.
Yeah. No.
Could you have to vote no if you don't want?
There should be no parking sign, no, we don't want that. So we allow them.
You have to vote no.
No, I don't approve, I think he should have parking.
Okay, we're gonna, we'll do this guy. Trustee Pojek.
No.
Trustee Schroder.
Yeah, she said.
She said no.
I said he should have parking, yes.
Okay. Trustee Schmidt has already voted.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yeah, no.
Trustee Light.
No.
Yeah, everybody wants parking there, you know. Okay, motion is, uh, no, uh, parking is failed, is denied, you know. So people can have parking over there.
And, and from my standpoint, we'll do our best not to take advantage.
Yeah, and, uh.
Cars will drive away whenever possible.
Mister Tom, what you can do, you know, educate your neighbors at, you know, that's the best time, you know. So don't over speed number one.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't speak.
No, no, I say, you can educate your neighbors, you know.
That's Kim, she speeds.
I don't, I live in Greenbrier town.
Okay, next is, uh, uh, new business. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business item two and three, I need motion for that. Uh, trustee, uh, Light.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, trustee project second, discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two and three is approved. Number two, an ordinance granting a conditional use or use to permit a restaurant eat in or carry out establishment with outdoor dining, serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises and a conditional use to permit a restaurant with drive-through facility located at two thousand sixty-five Bloomingdale Road in the village of Glendale Heights. L and I, lucky's pub from the October sixth, twenty-two C O W, first reading waived, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-five. I need motion for, is there a motion to adopt, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-five? Uh, trustee Light and trustee, second is trustee project. A discussion. The first is motion by, uh, trustee Light.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any discussion.
I didn't hear anything.
Yeah.
So moved, so.
Second, second is trustee project, second. And, uh, discussion. No? Um, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-six is approved. Number four, an ordinance to amend section.
Three.
Do we have a number four still?
Three.
Number three.
Oh, number three, sorry. Number three, an ordinance to amend section four dash three dash thirteen entitled number of licenses of chapter three entitled liquor control of title four entitled business and license registrations of the village code of the village of Glendale Heights, L and I, Tony's Fresh Market, first reading waived, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-six. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-six? Uh, trustee Siddiqui.
So moved.
Second, trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Discussion, please. None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes. The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-six is approved. Number four.
No, there's no number four, Mary. That, that was old business number one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, she now. Public discussion of agenda items. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there a, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? None? So I need motion to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, trustee Light, second, trustee project.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui. Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Uh, trustee Schmidt, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. All right. I would like to call this committee, the whole meeting of Thursday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Trustee Siddiqui.
Yeah, the Simon's property. The Simon property.
Simon property?
Yeah.
Would you please repeat that? I'm sorry.
Simon's property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll now open the floor to public comment not related to cannabis. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an issue not related to cannabis?
Mister Epstein, on Club Drive, um, I'd like to discuss formulation of a committee to initiate and evaluate a R F P for cricket. I would like to be part of that committee as a member of the public, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Okay.
I just have a question on that, guys, Kim, ten fifty-three Greenbrier. What is the formulation of a committee? I know what it is, but why are we doing that? To initiate and evaluate an R F P for cricket?
We are forming a committee to generate an R F P for the leasing of the cricket fields next year and evaluating the R F P responses.
Don't we normally do that?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought Doug did this. Doug, you don't do the R F Ps for?
No, in this case, the board wants to evaluate the R F Ps and make a recommendation as to the, um, vendor, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
For the term of the contract.
Is that normal?
It's a, it's not un-normal, I mean, it's a public, you know, used space that the board wants to have input into who uses it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment on Zoom from Obaid.
Go ahead. Somebody talking?
Are you able to communicate with me?
I'm trying to. Okay, in the meantime, I have Mohammed Chodri again.
Go ahead, Mohammed.
Um, now, I want to ask, uh, actually, is there any, um, plan to review the camera on North Avenue and the main street of Glen Allen, uh, to remove it? It, it has been quite a few years and, um, I think the study should be done if the purpose of installing the camera has been, you know, achieved. Um, I'm very nervous, my, three of my kids are in high school level and, um, my, even myself, very nervous to pass this intersection just because of, uh, the fear of getting a ticket. Uh, there could be a severe crash, uh, can happen. So I understand that many of the cities in our neighborhood, they install that red light camera and then they reviewed it after a few years and then they removed it. Uh, do we have any plan like that?
Not at the present time, we don't know.
Obaid is no longer communicating with me, so.
Is there anything further?
Anything else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Go on to committee recommendations.
Billy, maybe you should want to tell the crowd how, uh, this process will go for, uh, cannabis?
Okay, we will, uh, present the cannabis.
Obaid has unmuted himself, do we still want to hear his comment?
Sure.
Or have we passed it? Go for it.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, hello, this is Obaid from seventy-one West Florida Avenue, Glendale Heights, Illinois. Okay, so I have a question that for the cricket committee, like, so is the village forming a committee by itself? Or is it going to be for public to the public to come and participate in the committee or what?
That's up for the board discussion tonight as to, uh, the role of the committee and who would be on it.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. Uh, we will be, uh, listening to presentations from the, uh, World of Weed, doing businesses Ivy Hall, located at twenty-one thirty Bloomingdale Road. That's at the intersection of Bloomingdale and Army Trail. And then ask for comments and, uh.
Actually, we'll, we'll, we'll let both presenters present.
Okay.
Then we'll have commentary from the audience on the cannabis. And then after the businesses have presented, after the, the residents have had commentary, then the board will decide action on, uh, the next steps.
Okay, and we will be limiting to a speaker speaking once, is that correct?
Speaking once, there's a five-minute time limit. And it's very important so that everybody has their opportunity to, uh, please let the people speak and not yell out while there's presentations going on. Little, you know, um, decorum for everybody would be appreciated, whether you're for or against. And just let everybody have their turn. Uh, everybody wants to have their voice heard, we appreciate that, the board will listen to you. Um, but just be reasonable in your, uh, commentary and your time.
And Doug, if I could add to that.
Hmm?
Uh, the discussion up for today is whether or not to allow them at a particular location. It is not whether you agree with cannabis or not agree with cannabis. The village of Glendale Heights allows dispensaries. This is whether they fit the criteria for conditional use at the location that they've chosen. Not your view of for or against, because it is already allowed in the village of Glendale Heights.
It's already allowed.
I just think that'll cut down on the comments and the amount of time that it will take.
Okay, first, we have a recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensary establishment within a C two community commercial district for World of Weed, doing business as Ivy Hall, located at twenty-one thirty Bloomingdale Road. Would the presenters like to speak?
Is there a laser on?
And please identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Nick Standiford, I'm a zoning attorney at the law firm of Shane Banks. The address is seventy West Madison, suite twenty-three hundred, Chicago, Illinois. Would you like, uh, the witnesses to be sworn tonight?
It is not necessary, no.
Okay, um, so I'll just do the introductions really quick, uh, so you heard from me, I'm Nick. Um, we're here to present our conditional use permit application tonight for the dispensary, uh, the Ivy Hall dispensary at twenty-one thirty Bloomingdale Road, um, that's Bloomingdale and Army Trail. So with me here tonight, we have Mister Elliott, who's one of the winners of the state cannabis license for this location. Um, so he, he'll be talking tonight. Um, we have Ed Farrell, who oversees the dispensary security, right there, there's Ed. And then we have Adam Rack, who's our land planner, Adam, if you could stand up. And then at the end, we have Lynn Means, who's our traffic consultant, Lynn, if you could stand up. So this is our team here tonight to, um, uh, what we like to do is do a, a quick overview of what we told to the plan commission and, uh, uh, give you our, the idea of what we're trying to do here. And, um, uh, so we're going to have each person kind of talk, uh, with, with relative quickness with, uh, uh, noting that it's, uh, getting late in the night. Um, and then we'll, uh, you know, we hope that you, uh, vote to approve, uh, to recommend approval of this project, uh, at the next board meeting. So, or tonight, and then, um, vote to approve at the next board meeting. So, uh, thank you very much for your attention tonight. I will kick it over to Adam Rack to go through the presentation. Uh, Adam, if you want to come up.
Describe your, yeah, so this is the, the laser and then this is the right, perfect. Describe your qualifications.
Good evening, my name is Adam Rack, uh, I am an urban planner, uh, with W B K Engineering, located at one sixteen West Main Street, St. Charles, Illinois, six zero one seven four, last name is spelled Rack, R A K. Uh, my credentials are, I have a, a bachelor's degree in architecture and a master's degree in urban planning with a focus on design. Uh, I've testified at upwards of a dozen hearings now, uh, locally for a, a number of cannabis cases and special uses. Uh, most recently, I've been involved in the design and permitting and approvals for two cannabis dispensaries, um, one located in, actually in Kingston, Washington, for the Port Gamble Skalam Indian Tribe, uh, and another located in Michigan, um, for the, uh, Pokagon Ban and Potawatomi, uh, Indian tribes. And those are, are, uh, design projects for cannabis. Uh, today, I, I think we'll give the brief version of our presentation. Um, you, some of you were at the last meeting and saw the longer version, so I'll try and be brief, uh, and just move through this very quickly. As Nick said, uh, we are here requesting conditional use approval to establish an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization at twenty-one thirty Bloomingdale Road in the village of Glendale Heights. This slide is, uh, a location map, uh, locating the property here at the intersection of Army Trail Road and Bloomingdale Road. It's identified by the little marker you're seeing there. Uh, from a zoning, zoning perspective, the existing property is zoned C two community commercial district. Uh, adult-use cannabis dispensing organizations are allowed as conditional uses in the C two district. In terms of zoning compliance, there are no. In terms of zoning compliance, there are no exterior, exterior structure or site modifications that would put us in a condition of non-compliance. The site will remain compliant with all yard, bulk, and density standards found within the city, the village's ordinance. In terms of land use compatibility, the adjacent development in the surrounding area is comprised of typical retail and commercial uses that are typically found along a commercial corridor. There's, you know, stores, commercial office, very typical uses, as I said, found throughout the C2 district and in this location. And as I said, there will be no internal improvements planned except for the installation of state mandated signage. And the proposed condition to use will reuse the building's site plan and the building as it is today. In terms of impact on surrounding uses, the future land use map is shown on the screen. You can see the, the big C of red, the, the subject property is located in that C of red. And it is a goal of commercial development to provide a broad selection of convenience and comparison shoppers of goods and services in centralized locations. With that said, this is a very centralized location, is a key commercial corridor in the village and appropriate use at this location. There are certain location restrictions, as you know, in the Village of Glendale Heights. The village will permit two cannabis dispensaries. One will be located along Army Trail Road. The other will be located along North Avenue. This cannabis dispensary is proposed at the Army Trail Road location. In addition, there are sensitive uses that they cannot be in proximity to the subject property. This location meets all of the requirements for buffer distances to those sensitive uses. From a site design perspective, the property is designed as a commercial outlot and a larger shopping center and is well-suited to vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic in the area and is also suited and served by public transportation via pace bus route to and from the metro station as well. Site access, there are four access points in the immediate vicinity providing access to the larger commercial, commercial shopping center. There are full access along the far east and far south sides and right and right access immediately adjacent to the property. Site circulation, the site is accessed via perimeter drive through the parking lot. There is two-way access around the south and before converting to one-way with angular parking around the east and north side. The existing drive-through runs along the southeast and north perimeter of the site. Site access and circulation is suitable for this location and this use. Parking supply and demand, we have found, I'll spare the, the long details. There is a shared parking agreement with the larger commercial area. There is suitable parking located on this, on this property. Lynn Means is here, who is the applicant's traffic engineer. She is available for, for specific questions if there are any after the presentation. The site itself, or the property, I should say, as a retail use will, will not have any additional impacts that are atypical of any other commercial or retail use at this location. So there will be no further improvements needed to adjacent roadway infrastructure or utility infrastructure. There will be no additional impacts to local services such as police or fire. From a building design standpoint, the property, the subject property will be broken down into public access, limited access, and restricted access area. The public access includes the main entryway where guests and customers will be forced to show their photo ID, which will be put into a scanner that will scan the barcode and confirm that the customer is indeed over the age of 21. At that point, they will be scanned into the main sales floor, which is a limited access area shown in yellow. That main sales floor includes the point of service as well. Only customers over the age of 21 are allowed in that location. Everything shown in red is restricted access. That is access to staff only, actually badge staff only. So if they don't have their badge, they are not allowed into the back area by state statute. And all doors in the restricted access area are key card access only. So everyone has to scan in and out of every door that they go in and out in that restricted access area. In terms of building exterior, as I said, there are no major modification, there are no structural modifications or site modifications planned aside from state statute, signage, as you can see in the, the plan, the rendering. All signage will be compliant with the local ordinance as well as regulations of IDFPR in the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. At this time, I'm going to introduce Gregory Elliott, who is here. He's the applicant and he is the operator of Ivy Hall. He's going to tell you a little bit more about the business, a little bit more about the brand Ivy Hall. He will bring up Ed Farrell, who is here from Silver Star Protection, who can tell you more about security protocols in place and some collaboration that, that has already gone on with the police department here. And then he will be available for any further questions to talk about security. Gregory?
Good evening. My name is Gregory Elliott. Address is 4255 North Indiana, Chicago, Illinois 60653. I'm the president and majority owner of World of Weed, which will be doing business in Illinois under the name Ivy Hall. Ivy Hall has extensive experience operating dispensaries in Illinois and nationwide. We will be looking to operate from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday. We anticipate creating upwards of 40 full and part-time jobs. And all of our staff will have to undergo state and federal background checks as well as 10 hours of professional training annually, which exceeds the eight hours of training mandated by the state. We look to add anywhere from $250,000 to $350,000 to the sales tax base Glendale Heights. And we're looking forward to coming here and being a good steward of the community. And with that, I'll introduce Ed Farrell from Silver Star Protection, who'll go over our security protocols.
Good evening. My name is Ed Farrell. My address is 3601 Algonquin Road, Rolling Meadows, Illinois. I'm the owner of Silver Star Protection Group. We are a third-party security company that is going to be doing security for Ivy Hall. If we could step back for a second, prior to me owning this company, I was a U.S. marshal for 24 years. Fortunately, at the age of 50, I was able to retire. I have a long history of securing things at a very high level. For example, Supreme Court justice details, security at their houses, designing security systems for federal facilities that have top-secret, secret, sensitive, classified information and SKIFs, which is where you view information. I've been able to parlay that experience into a third-party security company. So we will be doing security for Ivy Hall. One of the things I would point out about my company is we've been in business since 2015, and the vast majority of our business is in the cannabis space. We specialize in consulting and doing security and doing security integrations. In the cannabis space, we've evolved into a company that does security in three states, Illinois, Michigan, and Missouri. And we do security in over 100 facilities, bringing best practices to the industry. In advance of this, in talking with Greg and his team at Ivy Hall, they believe that security is a partnership with the law, with law enforcement, the police department, and the community. To that end, we met with Chief Pappas prior to coming here. We went over our security plan and security protocols to make sure we're not only meeting but exceeding what he expected and what the community expects. And he's read those. I won't speak for him, but it seems like he's on board with what we were presenting. In addition, Illinois is a highly regulated state. They have the most robust security plan for dispensaries in the country, and I'd like to go over them at a high level. So Ivy Hall and Greg and his team have come up with what I would call a comprehensive surveillance, multi-layered system. What does that mean? I'm going to go over it at a high level. So there isn't just one layer of security in the facility. There are multi, multi-layers. The first layer would be cameras. By state law, you're mandated to have cameras that cover every inch of the facility, interior and exterior, except the bathrooms. It's recorded 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that video is stored for 90 days. In addition, the Illinois State Police, IDFPR, have 24/7 access to those cameras, and they're constantly looking to make sure everybody in that facility is not only meeting but exceeding state regulations. It's a web-based portal to them. In addition to that, there is a intrusion detection system, things like glass break sensors, motion sensors, burglar alarms. In case somebody comes in, there are panic buttons. There is a protective film over the glass on the exterior, so you can't see in from the outside and you can't punch it in within object or a tool very easily. It takes a long time to get into. In addition to that, there's an armed security officer at the facility during all business hours. And that means when the staff comes in early to open up, we're there with the staff, opening the facility with them. We're there during all business hours, and at the end, when they're doing the closing protocols, we're there with them as well. So there's this armed security guard on-site at all times. That armed security guard is responsible for providing overall security but also doing randomized patrols. Two big things they're, they key in on is, one, is there is a strict no loitering policy, and there's a strict no consumption policy. We make sure nobody engages in that on the facility. Lastly, when it comes to our officers, we have highly trained officers. This is not a position where we put new officers. This is someone we're looking with prior experience and skills that transfer. Former law enforcement, former military. We bring them in, and our officers are highly trained. This is not a new position. Next, I'd like to talk about customer flow. I think a lot of concerns we've had when cannabis started was long lines. Those lines are over. There are more than 110 dispensaries, 180 coming on with competition. There's going to be very little, but our guards will work in ensuring there's great customer flow. We keep people in and out very quickly, and they're in our lines. And if, on days like 4/20, and other days when they are, we have plans to use stanchions, get them inside to make sure there are no lines. Lastly, I want to talk about the staff in the facility. Again, they will be a highly trained staff. Greg talked about the training they get that is a retail-specific, but we will also be training them on security protocols. What to do in medical emergencies, if there's an active threat, if they're, how to detect staff loss and diversion. So they will also have a very well-trained staff. And as you can see, this is a comprehensive plan. That's it at a high view. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have at the end. And I'll turn it back over to Adam Rack. Thank you.
At this time, I just wanted to also point out, I'll fast forward to the slide. The cannabis special use standards that are found in the village's ordinance, they speak to things like traffic, environmental nuisance, neighborhood character, services and facilities, public safety and health, and other factors, including compliance with the local ordinance. As per staff's report, staff is recommending approval. We also agree that based on the evidence presented here in this presentation and in the packet, that we do meet all of those standards to recommend approval for this special use. At this point, I'll turn it back to Nick if you'd like to close down the presentation and open it back up for questions. All right, so the, I think that the top, the top things to remember is that this, the site has a good, it's got good access. It's got good parking. It's a secure facility, as you heard, and it's a great location. It's a great, great location. It's going to get a lot of customers that are going to bring a lot, it's going to bring a lot of revenue to the village in, in the terms of municipal tax. So we think that this is a great project, and last but not least, it's a great operator. It's a good brand. And they're excited to become part of this community. So with that, we'd ask for your support and a recommendation to approve the project and the conditional use permit. Thank you.
We're going to go straight to the other one, correct, though? Yes. Counsel, if you're ready.
Is this one yours?
How do we get?
The arrow? There you go. Is this your presentation or is there different?
Doug, you want me to read the introduction?
Yeah, you should read the plan commission, number two.
Okay, number two, we have a recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensary establishment within a C2 community commercial district for Purifier LLC doing business as Holy Vanna located at 739 East North Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Dan Shapiro from Shapiro and Associates Law. I want to first thank you for allowing us to appear before you tonight. I represent the applicant, and with me tonight is Shanrika and Roshan, Dr. Roshan Patel. They're the owners of the applicant entity. John Mackiewicz, who's general counsel, and V. Shaw, who is our security consultant. Dr. Roshan is a registered pharmacist. Her mother is a successful retail operator, has Dunkin' Donuts, and has a wealth of experience in that regard. It's with great pleasure that, that we come before you. We're very grateful for the staff's recommendation or positive staff report. We're very grateful for the plan commission's positive recommendation a week or so ago. So this is a certificate of conditional approval. Anyone who gets to this point through the state has gone through rigorous vetting by the state. And the state has awarded a certificate of approval for a conditional dispensary based upon local zoning and local regulations. But the state's regulations are very robust, and it's perhaps the most highly regulated cannabis state in the country. Not only in terms of the operators, the owners, the security, everything. So it, it goes without saying that anything that we do not only must comply with your local ordinances, but must comply with the state regulations. Here's a view of the location, 739 North Avenue. It's at North and Glen Rise. It's an existing commercial office building. There are 19 parking spaces in the front, 19 parking spaces in the back, and according to code, there is a surplus of two spaces. Another view that we see, perspective from North Avenue. You'll see that we've taken the street view. We've identified the lighting. You'll also see, and I'll show you in another photograph just a second, in just a second, there's a vacant former Chinese restaurant at 737. We also own that site. So we also own that property. There is a permit now pending with the village to demo the building. I say that because there could be an opportunity for additional parking if that need were to arise. We don't think so, but if that need were to arise, there's cross axes that could be engineered and easily shared between two of the same, the owner owns both lots, both properties. Here's an additional perspective showing some of the landscaping and additional lights. It's hard to see with the circle, but those, that's the lighting. On the, privacy on the south side. To the west is the Chinese restaurant that I just mentioned. To the east is the tire store. To the north is North Avenue, and to the south is residential neighborhood. You'll see here an aerial. What is important in this aerial is you'll see that the arrow is coming off of Glen Rise, only point towards North Avenue to the north. There will be no right turn south towards the residential area. We will post signs saying no right turns to the south towards the residential area. It will be coming off of Glen Rise. There will be left turn only. Earlier, I mentioned the adjacent property that we also own, and this, and this is it. You'll see the green arrow back and forth, which shows the access. Right now, the grading is uneven. But when we get to the point where we want to have shared access or shared parking, we will work with the village's engineer to make sure that that grading is appropriate. Want to talk a little bit about some of the general information regarding the application before you, the special use application before you as well as the applicant. The office building, sorry, the commercial building that we just showed you will have a dispensary on the first floor and only the first floor. The bottom floor will have stores or ancillary uses, maybe a break room for people to sit and have coffee or lunch or something like that, or maybe some corporate offices. There will be no cannabis operations in the lower floor. There will be about 10 or 15 people per shift. And that proposed hours of operation will be nine to nine Monday through Friday, nine to 10 on Saturday, and Sunday, 10 to 6. This will be in an, uh, an area of employment, obviously, uh, and also will create revenue to the village. In looking at this and doing this with other applicants, uh, facility, dispensary of this size is likely to produce between $2,000 and $300,000 in sales tax revenue to the village each year. With regards to delivery times, those deliveries will be very, uh, brief, about 15 minutes. They will occur in off-peak hours between 10, 8 and 10. Understand when a delivery is made, is delivered, it is made into a secure room, uh, with a security guard, uh, reviewing that. The person makes the delivery and then they're escorted out. All of that, by the way, is captured on video. All of that is captured on the, on the, um, cameras, both inside the building and outside the building. There will be about 50 to 70 cameras with facial recognition, high-tech cameras, uh, between interior and exterior of the building. When a delivery is accepted, it is accepted with a security officer present. There will be about, um, two or three armed security guards. One will stay in the security room all the time, monitoring the cameras, monitoring the security and surveillance system. Another one will be inside and they will be armed. Upon acceptance of the delivery in the inventory or processing room, which, I'll speak to that in one second, the contractor will be escorted out by the security officer. The doors behind him or her will be closed and locked. All access doors will be card keyed. All doors will be, um, monitored with, all exterior doors will be monitored with cameras. All indoor, in, inside doors into secure areas will be card keyed. When someone walks in, if they walk in from the backside behind the building, they go into kind of like a vestibule area, upstairs or downstairs. That's as far as you get. You can't go into a door going upstairs, you can't go into a door going downstairs. It's key card, it's secured. The inventory processing will also be used for receiving and processing delivered cannabis, as I just mentioned. I think I just mentioned about the product. Now, there's two rooms where the product's gonna go. One is the inventory room, key card, monitored, surve- surveilled 24, uh, during all hours, sorry. And the other one is the vault room. That vault, by the way, has to be built to DEA standards, has to be designed to DEA standards and will be such. As I said before, um, when you get into, into the dispensary, um, the entrance, like all entrances and exits are equipped with cameras on each of the interior and exterior of the door. There's a visitor management station where a security guard will log in all visitors. They must present a government-issued identification and then they will verify that identification through a scanner. They then are, uh, the, the security agent will then allow the access, the customer access to a separate, secure, locked retail area by pressing a door release or unlock button. As I said before, the, the customers will not have, I said public, but customers will not have access to the basement or the second floor. There's only one door in the back and that's restricted access to go up or down. With the exception of the State Department, State and Department inspectors, visitors will not be granted access to restricted access areas without an appointment. There's an emergency access. We talked about contractors and vendors, they don't get to go into any restricted areas. Only, there, there's a controlled access to the retail floor, other floors, the vault room, the storage room, the disposal room, the conference room, key cards are required for these areas. Um, as I mentioned before, there's an audio and video intercom station, card access reader. And along with the, the intercom system, there's a video system that will capture anyone's face that enters or exits the facility. In addition, the, the cameras to the outside or exterior of the building will, um, be directed towards the parking lot where people can, uh, where security rather can see any comings or goings in the parking lot and will also be allowed to see license plates. In addition to the video, there's also audio two-way communication setup to a desk-mounted monitor station at the security office. As I mentioned before about the security guards. Cameras. The cameras are state-of-the-art. Um, they will have facial recognition, there will be a database. Similar, similarly, um, the cameras will be hooked into the state and local police for additional security and surveillance. Cameras will also not only be outside and at the doors, but you also will have cameras shining on the product, shining on the point of sale, shining on, uh, anyone who's handle shining, aiming towards anyone who handles, uh, product. So let's talk about the product. Uh, it is stored in a restricted area or in inventory room, which is only accessible, one, by key cards and two, by certain people. Not just anyone, only certain restricted, uh, employees of the dispensary will be allowed to go in there. It's monitored by a 360-degree ceiling-mounted camera system and it is in a restricted area. It will be monitored, uh, 24 hours per day as prescribed by state statute. All counters will have satisfactory, uh, height and also will have cameras directed towards the sale and towards the product. As you probably know, product that you see out in the retail room is not real product. All that stuff is either in the inventory room or in the vault. At the end of the night, any product is put in the vault, closed under lock and, lock and key, under, under the vault. There's nothing that remains outside of the vault. And that means no product, no cash, no money. Registers will be monitored with two cameras, as I indicated before. There's a duress button. Um, duress buttons are under the, well, wherever they're located, uh, in case of the emergency. As I mentioned, uh, the vault will conform to DEA's, uh, security requirements. It will be physically secured with a s- a solid steel vault door made of 12-inch gouge steel. It will only, uh, be accessible by biometric verification. It is only, that room is only limited to just a very few at the dispensary. Currency is stored in the vault room in a separate vault from the product. The vault will have not only, uh, the DEA standards, but it will be equipped with an alarm and a biometric reader, as I indicated, uh, just a second or two ago. If an alarm goes off, security is dispatched ASAP. The monitoring technology will notify security, the security office at the presence of any individual who is not designated as an authorized entrant into the area unless accompanied by the general manager, security officer, or principal officer as identified through a central database of the company personnel. Here's our floor plan. Do we have a, like a laser thing?
Can you put your hand in front of it to make sure it's working? Here, let me show you. I can show you. It might not reach that far.
Oh, she's got the magic touch.
You can use this one, you can use this one. It's a green one. Great, thank you. All right, so, oops.
Here's where you enter, the waiting area that we talked about, where you have to go through access, through a security guard, through intercom system, through, uh, uh, video. There's, uh, additional seating over here. Here's the retail area. It's hard to see, but these other rooms are storage, disposable, vault rooms. The next picture will be a little bit easier to show you where the cameras would be located inside. And you'll see red areas restricted. Folks can't go there. Access is restricted. Card, card keys are only, uh, the only way into these areas. This is the, sorry, this is the floor plan, just showing you the restricted area and the floor plan without the, the color-coded areas. And this is the color-coded restricted, non-restricted area with cameras. I do want to stress that, um, because of the very, very robust and strict regulations by the state, um, there is, there is a extraordinary amount of security and as I said before, vetting for anyone who's received a conditional license. This area is, um, consistent with the future planning of your comprehensive plan. It is surrounded, or it's adjacent to the east on a C2 district, it's adjacent on the west to a C2 community district. It is, uh, to the, uh, north, it's a business park, uh, with an existing multi-tenant flex building. Uh, as I said before, the, uh, tire store and the Chinese restaurant are the immediate adjacent uses. So not only does it fit in with the C2 district, but it fits in with your long-term comprehensive planning as well. We do appreciate your attention. We would ask for your favorable consideration tonight. We're available for questions. I now would like to ask for V, or are you V? Uh, V Shaw, our security consultant, to make a brief presentation.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Woibo Asha. Office address is 1855 Rolling Road, Suite D, Rolling Meadows, 60008. So this presentation is for 739 East North Avenue. Dan already discussed about all the security, um, things over here. I'm, um, this is, uh, sorry. So I'm, I'm the owner of the VBtronics and, uh, we deal in security cameras, access control, uh, radio equipments, uh, from last 22 years. And we are partnered up with, uh, Axis Digital Watchdog. These are, this is the plan, uh, he already discussed about this. Uh, so we have a multi-level of security, uh, here. All the cameras are inside and outside of the building. The highlighted part is the access door system. So those are the access control, um, system e- uh, everywhere, um, and the multi-layer security. So I think he already discussed about this, so, uh, I'm good. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hello to the public. Um, my name is Dr. Roshan Patel. I'm the majority, minority female owner of Holy Vanna Dispensary. I just want to take a couple of minutes just to tell the board, the community, that we are here to be a part of Glendale Heights, to provide our support, to create jobs, to build and grow with Glendale Heights, the schools, the churches, the community, the mosques. I would like some respect as I talk, please. I'm here as a licensed pharmacist and to create and build a wonderful, harmonious, joyous togetherness community, whether, no, no biasness. We just want to have a diverse, homely, harmony, harmonious community. That's all we want. And we're just looking, again, I would like respect from the public. We are coming in to Glendale Heights to provide support, growth, revenue, and to serve the community in the best possible way that we can. And like I said, we plan to do that with helping out the schools, helping out the parks, helping out the police stations, which we have done in our other businesses, helping out the fire departments. We are very actively involved in all other communities that we have businesses in. Thank you very much.
The village has designated two areas for possible dispensaries, one of which is on North Avenue. We think this is a terrific site and a terrific opportunity, not only on behalf of the applicant, but on behalf of the village. We do appreciate your consideration. We're happy to answer any questions from you or from the public, uh, happy to respond to anything that you need from us. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an issue related to cannabis? Yes, lady?
If we could just form a line.
Epstein, I, I recognize the lady back there.
For both.
Hi, Bernadette Ludwig.
It's your turn.
When it's your turn.
We could just form a line straight back, that'd be okay.
Bernadette Ludwig, 22 West 114 Valley View Drive. I live behind the proposed site on North Avenue. Our fences, we share backyard. We're in the Glen Allen section, right after you go over that fence, okay? May benefit Glendale Heights, sure, revenue-wise. As far as marijuana goes, I'm not here to talk about the evils of it. That's a whole different discussion. We talk about neighborhood character. That's my important discussion here with you today. 300 feet away from their exit will be a child's bus stop, the kids, there are 15 to 20 kids that stand on that corner. He talked about no right turns. Who's going to be there to enforce that? Are they gonna run out with their armed security to stop these people from making that right-hand turn? I don't think they will. We have two restaurants that are joined next to that building that started out as a trucking dispatch company and now will become a marijuana shop. Not medical marijuana for everybody to be joyous, but recreational marijuana, totally different subject. Your first place is in a absolutely retail place. Couldn't be a better place for it. If that's what you want to do, that's wonderful. But the character of our neighborhood will be changed with that store being open. I think it's wonderful that it's a minority lady that's opening. As a matter of fact, I think they're wonderful people, it's a great thing, but it's not appropriate for our area. And that's just a simple fact. Okay? Okay, guys?
Chris Epstein, Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. With regards to the type, it's going to be both medical and recreational cannabis, from what I understand. One question I have for the Holy Vanna location, is your sales tax going to be comparable? I don't know if your, your property is incorporated or not. And I know there is a difference between the sales tax that would be generated or is there an exception because of it being cannabis? Another thing for both dispensaries is security access. Is there going to be a time when any one person has access to the facility alone, including security? I spent time, a number of years, over 10 years in the banking industry. You never had only one person with regards to access to the facility at any time. It always had to be multiple people. And also the key cards, are they, hopefully they're not going to be identified in any way with the facilities itself, maybe just the picture of the employee and stuff like that. Nobody that finds it would know and hopefully they doctor it up a little bit for each employee. And the last thing I want to be, bring up, the ones from Holy Vanna had mentioned biometrics. I don't know if it's the same with Ivy Hall, but with biometrics, the state of Illinois has some extremely restricted use of biometrics, if not totally banned. There's been a number of businesses, including Facebook, that have been sued and litigated and the people that had their biometrics taken were paid money as a compensation for those biometrics by those particular companies. So I'm not sure where they stand with regards to security and the use of biometrics and if there's an exception because of the type of business.
John Green, Valley View Drive. I won't repeat what my wife said. She had great facts. Once again, you know, with the bus stop and all. I want to talk about the land use. There is no guarantee that they're going to maintain the lot that's next to them for overflow parking. As mentioned last time, they weren't sure whether they're going to keep it or not keep it. I know the German Restaurant shares parking in that parking lot right now. So I don't know what they're going to do with it in the future. So I'm not going to depend on that for extra parking. So one question I have is, there was buffer mentioned, I didn't even think about it. Is there a buffer between this type of business and residence, residential?
There's no, there's no requirement in there.
No, no buffer, okay. Anyways, my second thing is safety. There's two separate parking lots, a north lot and a south lot. There is two entrances, a north entrance and a south entrance. They're not conjoined in any way, shape or form. So, and there is also no walkway, sidewalk or anything to go from the south parking lot to the north parking lot or their entrance. So I don't know what the people that park in the south parking lot, if they're going to walk out on the street to walk around to go into the front entrance or not, I haven't seen any proposal for that. So that's one thing. The second thing is the exit or entrance from the north parking lot is 15 feet from the white stripe going from Glen Rise to North Avenue. So if there's already one car sitting there waiting to go either west or east, the car coming out of the north parking lot will not even be able to turn to wait to get on the North Avenue. They will have to completely wait until that car is gone or they're going to make a right-hand turn. Once again, they said they're going to put signs up, but there's not going to be anybody there to enforce it. Glen Allen cops can't even go there, it has to be a sheriff. So I don't know if a sheriff's going to sit there to enforce that, no, no right turn, which is going to bring them right into our neighborhood. Our street is on a dead end, so people are going to be going down that way thinking they can get back out and go around. So they're going to be turning around and coming back. We see it now on a regular basis. The south lot is 80 feet from that same line. So if you have three cars there, that's a total of around 60 feet. Once again, that car can't even get out and go to the left. So you're going to have two situations of people leaving, trying to get out onto Glen Rise to make the turn either east or west onto North Avenue. I think it's going to create a terrible traffic problem. It's a safety problem. People that whip, if they're headed west on North Avenue, coming south into, on the Glen Rise, man, they whip, they whip through there to cross over the traffic. So if somebody all of a sudden is pulling out and they stop, if, if they're still hanging out into the eastbound lane, it's a potential traffic safety problem. So I have the traffic issue, I have the parking issue, I have the safety issue with how this stuff is delivered. Once again, it's two separate parking lots. Do they deliver in the north parking lot and go in the front entrance? Or do they deliver in the south parking lot and go in the south entrance? If they park in the south parking lot, once that van pulls in there, it's trapped. There is no way out except for back out onto Glen Rise. It's, it's a six-foot wall, it's the building and its residents. So once that van pulls in there, he's trapped. He has no way to get out, to escape, except for back to Glen Rise. So that would be a safety concern that I would worry about. There's probably some things that I'm going to sit down, I'm going to forget about because I get a little nervous up here. But first proposal, professional, well put together, excellent security and the right location. Everybody always says, location, location, location. This is not the right location. Backing up to a neighborhood is not the right location. Put it in a business park, put it in an industrial park, put it in a plaza. Whatever they want to do, that's fine. But, and they, they, they want to talk about harmonious and all that, they've never spoken to any of us. We back right up to this property.
This is to inform the chair, we have five minutes.
That's my, that's what I got to say.
Hi, my name is Sue Carrom and I live on Second Street in Glen Allen. And I am adjacent to the property. I am the homeowners association president of this subdivision. We have over 400 residents. Unfortunately, I had COVID and I could not come to the other meeting that you guys had. If I had known about it, I would have been here. And also I was surprised that you put new business. You didn't put anything on about a cannabis business, which I think if people knew that it was going to be a cannabis business, there would have been at least a lot more people at the last meeting. But unfortunately, I could not come. One thing about this cannabis business, they said it's, there was going to be no going south on Glen Rise. Find that very hard to believe. First of all, our community is DuPage County Police, not Glendale Heights. And therefore, Glendale Heights, I don't think is going to stand there at the corner with their cop cars saying, oh, well, they're turning, they're going south, they can't go that way. I don't believe that's going to happen. And especially the time, nine o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock at night, people are going to be cutting through our neighborhood like wildfire. We have young kids, a lot of young kids, and especially that one lady said with all the kids at the bus stop. These people are not, and I repeat, not going to just get their pot and leave. They're not going to do it because they want to have their, their pot and mosey on in our neighborhood and smoke it right away. That's what I think. That's just my opinion. As far as lighting goes, the minute you hit the back of that building, we have very few lights, very few overhead lights. And I think as far as traffic, it would be unsurmountable. And let's, let's last thing here. We have 400 homes and I've lived in that neighborhood for four years. And I would say the majority of the people in that neighborhood do not want this dispensary. If you want to put it up on Army Trail, and I know you have the right, and I know you have the right to have two in your town, but as far as the location, not for our neighborhood.
My name is Mark Tate. I live on Park Boulevard in the neighborhood that we're discussing. I have a couple of issues. One is traffic. The, the, at the planning board meeting, there was no traffic study presented. At this meeting, no traffic study, you know, presented at all. So they have, they don't have any idea what kind of traffic they're dealing with. And on that vein, the intersection at North Avenue and Glen Rise does not have a traffic light. If you've ever been on North Avenue, try making a left through six lanes of traffic. Good luck with that. They're not going to do it. They're going to cut through our neighborhood going back to Main Street, putting, like she said, it just puts more traffic in our area that shouldn't be there, especially when they're high. Considering the amount of persons heading westbound, cut through the neighborhood and to Main Street, this will create atypical volume of traffic. The proposed site is a residential area where children play. There are no sidewalks in our area and so they play in the street. This is, your central traffic can put those kids at risk in their own neighborhood. The second is neighborhood character. Again, it's quiet residential area, having drugs sold where we reside takes away from the wholesome character of the neighborhood. This location is where our children witness the ongoings and we normalize the sale and use of drugs. We didn't spend the last four years supporting the war on drugs to try and change our minds now. Placing a controversial store right up in our neighborhood creates such disharmony between the commercial and the residents. And the last comment is, I'd hope you reconsider the location because right now, you guys are reaping all the profits and we're getting all the problems.
My name is Adams of Kovik. I live in the Glen Allen countryside. The, you know, first thing that I like to, the most important thing that I think both parties have brought, brought to us was extreme fear of crime. They, they presented such high-tech technology, cards, doors, security. They just pumped so much fear of crime that they're expecting. They presented crime. And I don't think Glendale Heights wants crime in their village. And that's what they projected, not the community. So this is something that you're bringing extreme fear to the residents of Glendale Heights. Both of these locations are around religious centers. That brought change to the community. Religion brings change, not marijuana. So this is something that we have to think and ponder about, that in these neighborhoods where our children thrive, where our children play, where our children roam around, we don't want them to witness the selling of marijuana. This is something that we don't want crime, and this is my biggest thing that, listening to these presentations, is crime. So if they, they haven't once talked about the children of the community, haven't once talked about the neighbors of the community, they haven't considered the people of the community. So this is something that I find, this is, this is inconsiderate to us as a community to bring something to this presence. All they presented is how they would generate funds and money for Glendale Heights, but I don't think we should want this kind of money in Glendale Heights. Thank you so much.
My name is Aysin Salik. I share a property very close to North Avenue, the North Avenue, residence, the North Avenue cannabis store, about like 200 feet away from there, less than 200 feet, I would say. Basically, I would just echo what my neighbor John has said and what my colleague Adam has said here, my friend, and my brother, what Adam has said here. I think bringing this, this store, these, both of these stores outweigh the benefits of what Glendale Heights have actually achieved so far. We have seen people in communities move from different parts of the states to come into this, this, this city, different parts of the country to move into this city just because of the religious institutions which are out here, around here. We have seen people moving from Colorado, California, New York City and elsewhere, move in Glendale Heights or around Glendale Heights area. We don't want these stores just because of the facts that I have actually already shared with you guys via email. I, I hope that every trustee has had, had, had a chance to have a look. I think the store, I mean, a store that actually sells recreational marijuana in the village implies, I think it reduces the perception of risk in, 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 in teens, in adults, in youths. And we don't really want that to happen. And as I have already shared with you in, in my email with the government data, that there are more crashes, there are more car accidents because of, of people are getting high when they are actually driving. And, and, and the store, which is going to open till 10:00 PM on a weekend, or even at 9:00 PM at the weekend, people, whoever is going to buy that product, they're not going to go home and have it. They're going to, just going to have it right there in the car and they're just going to get high. And I have seen people who actually are actually having this every now and then, have actually visited the local businesses, the Dunkin' Donuts shop, the, the tobacco shop, and right now the Aldi is not even open there yet. I mean, once the Aldi is open, you, we have a regular traffic, regular residence traffic sharing the same parking lot of almost high people who are actually coming there to actually buy these products. We don't really want that to happen in Glendale Heights town. That's all I want to, I wanted to say. That's about it.
My name is Bahamish Sharif. I, I live in 215 Amath Court, Glendale Heights. I used to live in Michigan, Kalamazoo, Michigan, and I moved here 13 years ago in 2009. The main reason, because I like, I have relatives here and I found Glendale Heights is a residential area. There is not much like commercial things going on and plus it's a very good community. We have facilities for prayers and all things. So the reason is that it's a residential area. We are trying to, you guys, the request is to open two of these type of stores. So this is not acceptable to us. I have four kids. For example, I go almost every day, every other day to shop in Walmart, Costco, and the traffic on the Bloomingdale. When I take left on Army Trail, always a lot of people. And when I come back from my shopping, when I take right on, from the Army Trail to Bloomingdale, tons of traffic. So already we are facing a lot of traffic over there and now we are adding more traffic. And plus, I have always seen, I'm always scared, when I take a ride from Army Trail on to the Bloomingdale coming south, the people coming from this strip to one, like this mall is always going to hit us. I always have that fear. I always have, they, they have two exits from there, they take a right from there, they always have the fear. So the party has not mentioned about the traffic rules and regulation, what they're going to do. So what I'm recommending, and then both of the parties have given very good presentation, and then the lucrative thing of, of that is $250,000 each dimension in a yearly revenue that is $500,000 for the city. Do we need this revenue? Why do we need this revenue? And a recent article, I forgot to bring that, in DuPage County, Glendale Heights is one, one of the second city we are paying high taxes. Yes, we are paying high taxes just because we don't have any commercial space because it's a residential town. So we are fine with that. Then why we need additional things like this where our kids can have easy access? So I request to not to grant this access and they can try in some other town. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Ahit Siddhui. I live in the neighborhood, like a lot of my neighbors. I've lived there about 15 years. I have four kids that I'm raising there. Again, you know, I'm, I'm a medical doctor, so I won't bore you all with the details of long-term use, use of marijuana because I know that's not what's up for debate here. But, you know, again, to reiterate, the neighborhood does not have sidewalks, does not have streetlights. again, to reiterate, the neighborhood does not have sidewalks, does not have streetlights. Our kids are biking up close to North Avenue, because everyone's told them, you don't go up to North Avenue. And the entrance to this is not from North Avenue, it's through the residential street. So something very important. The other thing is, again, I want to reiterate what a couple of the other neighbors have said. When it's traffic time, traffic stretches from 355 all the way to Main Street, or Glen Island Road. We've seen many drivers who, in frustration, just turn into our neighborhood, drive past Glen Rice to get onto Main Street again. So, you know, again, traffic, when they're going to try to come out of this place, they're going to look at the traffic on North Avenue. I know there's going to be a sign, but again, who's really going to follow a sign at that point? They're going to speed down Glen Rice Avenue. The applicant said, you know, many things about wanting to be in harmony with the neighborhood, with the neighbors, and being together. I think you can see the response from the neighborhood. So if they're really are sincere about their application, they would withdraw it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Saad Patel, and I live at 1 and 615 Glen Rice Avenue. So lots been said, and there isn't much that I can add to what they said, but one thing that, so I looked over the Holy Vana, especially the Holy Vana application from the village's website, pulled it down, and I went through it. And apparently, there's no traffic study that was done on Glen Rice Avenue and North Avenue, which is where this location is going to open up. The traffic study that was done was at two other dispensaries, one operating in Lombard, the other one operating in Westmont. And we're comparing apples to oranges. The one in Lombard, the closest residence is 1,200 feet away. And even that, that's on an aerial view from that location to the nearest home, which is divided by Highway 88. The other location, the Westmont location, the closest residential home is 175 feet away. So I just find it, you know, as, is just really disingenuous of the Holy Vana applicant to really say, we're trying to be harmonious with the community. You know, one of the conditions of this location, you know, by the last week, at last week's meeting that was brought up, is this place in harmony with the community. And it's not. It clearly is not. And I'll finally say that, I don't know if anyone has, if any of the applicants have actually been on Glen Rice Avenue. You know, the location has a North Avenue address, but it does not have a North Avenue entrance. The entrance is on Glen Rice Avenue. Guess what's going to happen when there's traffic? Everyone uses Google Maps. What do you think Google Maps is going to suggest when there's traffic? They're going to go through our neighborhood. And there's going to be undue and extra traffic from people that are trying to visit this location. And I'll end with this. I also filed a Freedom of Information Act request to Police Department Lombard and Westmont, and I got responses back from them. And I asked for, you know, how many incidences have been filed from the two locations, 11 East Ogden and the other one on Lombard. The one in Westmont, there were no incidents, there was, you know, one or two incidences, 2018, 2019. Starting 2020, there's, through today, there's pages of incidences. There's traffic violations, which is, you know, that's fine. But there's also attempted burglaries, there's also attempted, there's disturbances where arrests have been made. Do we want that in our neighborhood? And I'll end with this. Is $300,000 really worth it for Glendale Heights to bring these problems to this neighborhood? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica Bialik. I'm from 1384 Alberta Court. I was there a few times already. First of all, I have a question. If we open the store, who guarantees our safe of our city? We hire more policemen or something? Because this is, when you smoke marijuana, first of all, you don't supposed to be driving. The gentleman talking about the parking. No parking for the people like smoking pack. That's the same like alcohol. Yes? I think so. And we hired more policemen, or what do we want to do? Because I don't want to, you know, be scared, driving, or something. The people supposed to just walk there, and nothing more.
The response to your question, and I can just tell you a conversation I had today. And I know we referenced Lombard. I spoke to the Lombard Chief of Police. I spoke to the Addison Director of Public Safety. And I also spoke to the Villa Park Chief of Police. Last week, we spoke to the St. Charles Chief of Police. All of those towns have dispensaries. Every single one of them said there has been zero problems. Everybody has to understand, there's rules that you have to follow when you go to cannabis dispensaries. The people who are following the rules are not the ones that we are arresting. The people who are not following the rules are the ones that we are arresting. That is the big difference. So the arrest that we're getting is from the black market cannabis. It is not, the cost of the cannabis at a cannabis dispensary is so high, the people who are buying from there are the ones who are following what the state mandate told them they have to do. So the answer to your question is, do we need to get more officers? By what I've been told by those four other chiefs, the answer is no. Because it does not-
But do you guarantee us no one will be driving with the high?
I can't guarantee anything. But I can tell you that the cannabis arrest, DUI arrest that you're talking about correlates to more towards black market marijuana arrests than any dispensary arrests, if you understand what I'm saying. The product that they have on them is from black market, not from dispensaries.
But this is the same. Marijuana, it's marijuana. It's the addiction. You know that?
Correct.
Addiction, and I don't want to raise my kids.
Sir, you're out of order. Can you please wait for your turn?
This is, for me, this is addiction, you know? Smoking marijuana, you can be addicted. And everybody, I don't think so. The people around here want to live in there and raise their children when we have a marijuana store.
You're right. Marijuana is a vice. Alcohol is a vice. Gambling is a vice. Tobacco is a vice. I don't do any of those. I choose not to do any of those. People choose what they want to do in life. But there are people who choose to do that. And when we talk about cannabis, and we talk about alcohol, you turn on your TV, tell me you don't see a commercial for drinking beer on any program that you watch. It is a vice. Gambling, look how many gambling venues are throughout the state of Illinois. Tobacco, it's the same thing. We once had prohibition, too, and people fought that. And now alcohol is everywhere. Do I agree with that? Do I drink? No. But people have the choice, too, because legislation made it that way.
We already got a problem with our high school, you know, that, because I have two boys in the high school, and we don't need to problem in here, in our city. We want to save, quiet city, no more problem. There's a lot of crime in there right now, and we don't need it. And one more question. You will be owner of the store, yes? You will be owner of the store? Yes. What city do you live?
Chicago.
Chicago. And you opened the store already in Chicago?
No, we're working on that location now.
Okay. That's me, okay. How about you guys? What city do you, do you have, what?
Naperville.
And you already opened the store in Naperville?
No.
Why not? Because you know, you know the fear. You don't want to open your store? And you are a doctor, and you're talking how much, how many things do you bring to our city? But you're not talking about addiction. This is the addiction. I'm so sorry. And I don't want to live in there and raise my children. That's enough already around the world. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ubaid. Ubaid Sheikh. I live in 222 Balmoral Court, Glendale Heights. I have been a resident of Glendale Heights for the past 15 years. I moved here in 2007. I really love our city, love the people here, love the community. I really felt that this is the place that I want to raise my kids. I have three kids now. Once I heard about this thing, that we're going to open these cannabis stores, I really felt that I should just be here and raise my voice against it, because the whole perception of the city is changing in my mind. You know, because I thought, always I thought that this, though the taxes are pretty high here, property taxes, but I still feel that, right, this is a very great city to raise my children. Right? I have like an eight-year-old daughter and twins, like two, four-year-old. I felt that I bought a house. I said, I'm going to live here, I'm going to raise my family. But now, with the opening of these drug stores, it's completely changing my perception that I do really want to live here. So that's number one. The second thing is that, right, what kind of traffic these stores are going to attract? Who are these people, right? As the sister just said earlier, that people are going to get addicted to this, right? And it's going to bring lots of traffic into our city that are addicted to this marijuana, right? And my wife, my children are driving around in the same city, right? People are high, driving around. I feel very insecure here anymore, right? And the third thing is that, right, look at all these people who showed up here, you know? It's almost about 10 o'clock now, right, 10:15, right? And so many people are sitting here, little kids, families, you know, wives, mothers, brothers, everyone, right? They are here for a reason, right? I strongly recommend you to just listen to their voices, you know, what we have to say. We don't want these stores here in the city. Thank you.
My name is Mohamed Ansari. I'm a resident of Carol Stream, a neighboring town. The reason for me being here is because I take North Avenue and Bloomingdale on a daily basis. The location of the cannabis store that's going up is right adjacent to Aldi. So I feel that I should express my opinion on the location, and the safety of our town. You get your groceries in Aldi, and you can also get your marijuana on the next door, if that's the case. We have Dunkin' Donuts next to it, which I take every day. Coffee, get my coffee there. If I take my kids to the Dunkin' Donuts, and kids raise a question, what is going on next door? It's a big line form over there. And the gentleman over there expressed safety, or ordinance of, you know, forming a peaceful line, as if you are going to a, you know, voting booth, peacefully going in there and getting your marijuana.
It's a recreational fun place that they can actually buy some stuff?
Yeah. What I'm trying to say is, the exposure we are putting our kids to, get your donuts, your strawberry sprinkles, and you can get your marijuana next door. What kind of presidents are we studying for our kids? Are we not thinking about the future of the kids? Not just because of profit the town will get from the taxes? And the safety, the mention of, you know, forming lines by the presenter, also, if something goes wrong, it's going to also put a strain on the safety of the town, where the resources have to be divided. A cop has to go out there and make things right. This is going to take away the resources from the town that needs more, safety-wise. This point that I'm making might not be, you know, documented or studied, but is a common father for asking panel of six to make a wise decision on voting no to these stores. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Roman. I live on 1 North 618 River Drive in Glen Rice Estates. Also, I own the home in 710 Burdette Avenue in Glendale Heights, Illinois. Actually, my mom and my sister live there now. We just moved to the, across the North Avenue. Officer, question to you. You probably know that this North Avenue, especially in the morning, is choked with traffic. So everybody who lives on the River Drive, in order for them to make a left turn on North Avenue, they have to use Glen Rice Street, right, because of the meridian. So that intersection, already choking every morning. For me to commute my two kids, and also pick up my two nephews from across the North Avenue, and take them both to Forest Glen, takes, it's a challenge, okay? It's just a ticking bomb when something's going to happen there. And then, well, those two involve an accident or whatever, is going to be responsible, not everybody else, okay? So is it worth $300,000? I don't know. Now, the other thing is, that place already has a, there is a dispatch company there, like they mentioned. Also, there is a, what is it, Goodyear Tire Shop. In the morning, that intersection is packed with people there. So you mentioned Addison. Addison has two places, but they are both located in industrial area. So I have no problem for you guys to open a place somewhere in industrial area, away from houses, away from people. I think that's, that will be worth it. So the other thing is that everybody on River Drive, to make a left turn, they have to use that street. So traffic-wise, we know what the issue is. Now, people who use the cannabis, whatever, so besides smoking, that's saying, you also have different things, right? So how you know who's using what? Okay, so different studies, so it says different things. They're going to be looking for, they're going to be saying that study says it's all safe. There is different studies that says the crime went up from 25 to 140-something percent. So it's 50/50, okay? So if that's worth $300,000 to you guys, I would say, let's raise the taxes maybe. I don't know. I think some neighbors probably going to be in favor of, if you're short of $300,000. Okay, so dividing by all the residents in Glendale Heights, I'm willing to take that challenge.
Hi, my name is Linda Casey. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. My husband and I moved here almost one year to the day from Ohio, and we live on River Road. And the reason we moved there, considering all the other houses that were for sale, was that it was in a nice, quiet neighborhood. We were used to being out more in the country, and that's why we moved there. The idea of having a cannabis location within walking distance, causing a lot of traffic through our neighborhood, is really scary to me. I have to ask you, you know, we're talking about the potential profits that you may reap from this. Have you discussed it with Glen Ellen? As my neighbors have mentioned, we're Glen Ellen residents. And so the profit goes to Glendale Heights, but the problems, the increased need for police protection, response to speeding through our neighborhoods, perhaps crime, those all go to Glen Ellen. And I think you at least owe Glen Ellen the courtesy of discussing this with them. Secondly, the properties that you've mentioned where cannabis locations are seem to be more commercial sites. I entreat you to reconsider the location of the Holy Vana, which backs up into our residence. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Sophia Udine. I live on 1 N 616 Glen Rice, the first stop sign after the North Avenue turn onto Glen Rice Avenue. I've got four children. My neighbors all have multiple children. They're all playing on that street. Nobody's going to be able to make a left turn onto North Avenue once they leave the Holy Vana. They're all going to come through our neighborhood, say they can't take a right turn onto Glen Rice, they'll take a right onto North Avenue, and a right on the river, and end up on Glen Rice. And the danger of that to our children is immense. You have potentially incapacitated drivers who are high, coming through our neighborhoods. Our neighborhood is a quiet place, the perfect place to stop, park your car, and smoke some weed. We don't have police presence in our neighborhood, because we've never felt the need. And Glendale Heights is not responsible for our police safety. DuPage County is, not even Glen Ellen. So this is a discussion that needs to happen with Glen Ellen and DuPage County. And secondly, is that this, the Holy Vana is like a stone's throw away from an educational institution that serves hundreds of minors every day. This is not a suitable location for a cannabis dispensary, an addictive drug, that children are, everybody starts, they're like, hey, it's cool, it's legal. You know, I'm just chilling with my friends, doing a little weed. But it goes on from there. Two days ago, my- Two days ago, my family attended the funeral of a twenty-four year old young woman. Who started like that? Cannabis is legal. Right, I'm just doing it with my friends, mom, chill. But it goes on, addiction is real, addiction happens. And you go on to the dangerous drugs and it ruins lives, it ruins communities. I do not support the location of the Holy Vanna, and I hope that you vote against it as well. Thank you.
Hi guys, uh, I'm Sumble and I'm a student at Glenwood West. Uh, I actually live in the neighborhood that we are discussing today. And I am a high school student, I take the bus stop, okay? And this location is so close to that, so many kids every day, little kids, my age kids, teenagers. We get addicted, right? That's not a good thing, that's a very, very bad thing. And every day I go to school, I go home, I walk home. And imagine now if double the traffic, drunk people, high people, okay? That's not, that's not a good situation in any way at all, right? So, I want you guys to think, what about your kids? You guys have kids, right? You guys all have, probably have kids, right? Think about them, think about, put yourselves in our shoes. How you would feel if you were in our shoes? How would you feel? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarum Khan. Um, I live on one N five forty River Drive, which is adjacent to um Glen Rice where Holy Vanna wants to open up. Um, and honestly, the best part of this community, even though I haven't lived here very long, just over a year. Um, you'll go here pretty much between one P M and up until, I guess sunset, every single day. You'll see families walking around on every corner, every street. There's families, there's little kids playing around. There's people just walking, because it's, it's always so quiet, there's never anybody there. There's people just walking around. And we've heard so many concerns about the traffic. I'm not here to talk about what's bad about marijuana and whatever, just talking about the traffic. As someone obviously who walks there very often, bikes there very often, I have a five year old little brother who bikes there all the time. The last thing we want is for more cars to be going there, especially if the per- the driver is under the influence. Um, since we are in an unincorporated uh community, we obviously don't have streetlights. Um, because of that, um, pretty much after, well, starting, what, next, next two weeks, it's gonna be sundark at what, four P M? Um, so, all the way from four P M to nine P M on the weekdays and four P M to ten P M on the weekends. We're gonna have people who will be in our community with no streetlights, like, if you've ever been there, you literally cannot see anything there. Unless you have really bright uh headlights and whatever, and even then, it's impossible to see a person. So, the last thing we want is for more people to be in our community, just driving around. Already, whether it's high traffic time or even normal, getting onto North, even if you wanna take a right onto North, or if you wanna cross the street and take a left onto North, it is literally impossible. On, on like traffic heavy times, I waited up to ten minutes behind three or four cars to take a left out onto North Avenue. And best case scenario, it'll take me like a minute or two. And now, if we're gonna have a heavy, um, a heavy traffic business coming there, it is literally impossible that all these cars, assuming they don't take a right and, you know, go into the community. If they do decide to take the right route, take a left, that, that's adding at least what, double or triple the amount of cars that are already there. And it's just gonna delay us. That means we have to find other routes. And why should we, the homeowners and the people who live there, have to suffer for, you know, a new, a new business coming up? Lastly, uh, a few people ago, they, she brought up a religious entity that is in the area. Um, I spoke to, um, I don't remember his name, I believe his name is Paul, and he's a zoning director of DuPage County. And he mentioned how before that religious entity opened up, that corner and that area of North Avenue was absolute garbage. If you remember, there was a dog park there, right across there was a tobacco shop, there was, I believe there was a strip club. And I believe there was also, um, I don't, there was something else. And ever since that religious entity has come, he is saying the whole DuPage County is so glad that that area has cleaned up. Now, we have a warehouse right across with businesses, we have, uh, what, Bucky's Gas Station right there, we have a cycle shop, we have uh Speedway and just all around, you know, good, good businesses. So, the last thing we want is in our community to be bringing something like this back. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mohammed Akhtar, and I would actually um like to say that my family actually recently moved here because of the schools and the area and how well-built it is. And this store will actually be a bad thing for our community as a whole. Recently, as presented by one of the, um, people speaking for it, they said that it'll help our schools. I don't think that it will help our schools at all, because we're a young generation, we're a young generation. And we're taught that marijuana is not a good thing. And both the parties presented a good point, but the cameras and technology and the security emphasizing the dead was mainly because they know crime's gonna happen. I saw an article that said in September, a um marijuana dispenser, scaredy god fatally shoots a man who's attacking him with an axe. I think we all know why that was happening, he was high. And speaking off of that, I think Glendale Heights can maybe raise the tax by them. Instead of just getting a three hundred thousand dollars by a business that will do bad for the community rather than good. I think Glendale Heights should rather take a better approach and should not let this happen. Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Zaid Said. I have lived in this neighborhood in Glendale Heights uh for almost, I believe, seventeen years now. And I've basically grown up uh with the whole, you know, I still have my old Dare T-shirt from back in middle school, you know. Marijuana is a great gateway drug, you know, uh, there's this, that, and the other, and you know, there's, there's been a lot of talk about marijuana. Sure, it's legal now, but the hypocrisy that I sort of see coming up from, you know, growing up, being taught that something like this is, you know, not allowed. And you know, it causes much greater harm. And seeing it, you know, seeing live examples of it, uh, to now where we're having, you know, multiple dispensaries open in a few miles radius from, you know, my house is, is, is a big jump. And so, not only that, I've seen the one common thing amongst, you know, all of these people who are owning and opening and operating these dispensaries is they don't live in the neighborhood, they don't have to deal with, you know, the repercussions, which, you know, are intentional or not intentional. And I guess the one big thing that I've seen is that uh the previous sort of uh, the previous example of this was with vapes. Um, a lot of the underage youth, uh, I've seen people bring vapes to school, back in high school, even in college. Uh, underage individuals, getting them access from, uh, you know, maybe their older cousins, older brothers. And so, it's gonna be a definitely like a repeat thing for marijuana, especially with how common it's become, not only in high schools but in colleges for all in uh underage individuals. And, you know, just having multiple of those available, uh, will just increase those odds. And that's not something that, you know, I'd like to see in this community. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I just want to reiterate some concerns that others have brought up about
Sir, when, may we have your name, please?
Apologies. My name's Hamza Bagh, I live in uh the neighborhood behind the uh, the, the assigned question, I live on Dear Glen Court. And I just want to reiterate the concerns others had for the safety of children, because um not, I drive from the mosque to my home twice, three times a day. It is a weird, a queer day in which there's not many groups of children playing, not just like Muslims or others. But like, just in general, there's always someone out, always someone about. And as like, I feel that because of all this extra traffic and also these, in this incident, like a previous person mentioned these, this incident of a person in like a marijuana facility, like the security guard shooting the guy. I feel like even if these dangerous individuals are like prevented, they may still be like pushed into our community. And then with all like the children not playing, I feel like with this large amount of children and like this large community here, I feel like that would be rather um a rather negative influence upon the children if there is such a, a large amount of these negative or sus- suspect individuals that are there. And like, if, if, if these individuals continue like, um, continue to like hamper like the uh, the environment of the, of our neighborhood, or the traffic continues to be an issue, I feel that could be an issue for children. Especially like nighttime when there's little lighting, like others have said, how there is like a little bit dark there, like that street, like that Glen Rice is rather dark driving down. Like, if there's no headlight, or if a person's not prepared for it, they may like uh be unable to see what is in front of them. And that is like one of the main things I'm concerned about, like with all, if there's this minimal lighting and these suspect individuals coming into the neighborhood. That's, that's all I'd like to say.
My name is Hadeem Khan, I'm, live on one N five forty River Drive. Uh, so, in twenty twenty-one, the Cato Institute issued a study. And afterwards, they decided that marijuana uses increases crime, diminishes traffic safety, harms public health, and lowers teen educational achievement. And that's there, just wanted to put that up. And Glen Rice Avenue is the entrance to our community. Obviously, there's a few more, but that's the main entrance to our community. And we don't want that much traffic there. That's the way people take lefts. That's what, where we go when we want to get out of the community, and we don't want that much traffic. And we've seen people take a left, people, people break the rules, go, take a right into our community, they'll go out onto First Street and get to Main Street and find out that they can't even take a left over there, because there's a no left. And then they'll get back onto North Avenue by taking a right. That's gonna be a problem. Chief, can you tell us if that's gonna affect traffic?
It's definitely gonna be an issue, and I spoke to the owners about this. The westbound traffic turning left onto Glen Rice is definitely gonna be an issue, getting into the business and going back out, if you're gonna travel westbound, is going to be, it's gonna cause traffic congestion. And you're right, and we've, I spoke to the owners about this too, and I spoke to the owners about the increased traffic that it will bring to the residential area. It, you're right, can we say that people are not going to go to the residential area? We cannot. And you're a hundred percent right, it is dark there. And you're a hundred percent right, there is kids that walk on the streets all the time. And, and parents too. It's a community where there is a lot of, there is no sidewalk, so people have to walk on the street.
Okay, thank you. That's a professional opinion. Now, also, one of the brought up topics was that there's not that much light on the back of the building. By adding light, we would obviously be shining light into the backyards of the amazing neighbors who live right behind. And I've met some of these people, they're the most sweetest people you have ever met. And we don't want light shining straight into their windows while they're sleeping. Would you be affected if you're trying to sleep and there's a huge floodlight going straight into your eyes? Obviously, you would. Now, most high school students like me would not be here on a Thursday night when we should be studying, we should be sleeping, we should be preparing for our schools. But this is such a bad problem that we had to come out here ourselves and take this into our own hands. And she said that we should be a harmon- harmonious community, and we are being harmonious, we're saying that we don't want her here. We don't want her company coming in and standing at the door of our neighborhood, making more traffic, making it more dangerous. And overall affecting the community and make, lowering house prices and who knows what else. Now, for the proposed property on Army Trail and Bloomingdale, just wanted to add that I have friends there. We go to Dunkin Donuts, have donuts, what people do at Dunkin Donuts. And obviously, it would feel a lot better knowing that there's a dangerous thing right next to us, knowing that that's not there. But it is what it is, and we would prefer it's not there. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, my name is Ibat Khan. Um, I live on River Drive, right adjacent to Glen Rice, one N five forty. Um, and I'm really just here to reiterate, reiterate most of the points that the people have said before. Like, we obviously know the traffic is gonna be terrible. Um, the biggest thing, so I moved here about, what, like a year and a half ago? Um, and the best thing, as was stated by the kind lady back there, that um, the best part about this community is it's so peaceful. It's so peaceful, in fact, that it's almost like a fairy tale. You walk in and sometimes you can even see like deer just roaming around, you might just see like a coyote here. Or, you know, just like random like peaceful animals just walking around. In fact, if you come out on any winter night, you might come outside and just see footprints on the snow. It's absolutely beautiful. Um, and I'm not saying cannabis will affect the animals, but I'm just saying like, um, I'm just trying to reiterate how like peaceful it is. You see the children walking around, um, and it's beautiful, and I don't wanna ruin the harmonious nature of this community in any shape or form. Um, another thing is that, um, besides selling just pure marijuana, um, there's also edibles. And of course, I can't say that they'll be selling to children, because they probably will not be. But some way, some shape or form, children will get their hands on them. And I'm speaking from this from experience. I've lived in this area, and I've been around this area for about seven, eight years now, even though I just moved in. Um, I've been around the Bloomingdale, Army Trail area, and I live right next to the proposed property on um North Avenue, and I've gone to school here. And I know that children, they're not supposed to have edibles in their hands, but they somehow just do. And I'm not gonna blame these dispensaries, but I'm just saying like, these children do get their hands on them. And I see the effect that these children, like the, the effect it has on their studies, the effect that ha- that it has on their like home life. And so, and stuff like that, and, you know, that's not good. And that's about it.
My name is Mohammed Kiyasdeen. Um, I live like couple miles from here, uh, Lombard area. And I got four kids, uh, all of them teenagers. And the area that they know is Glendale Heights. They're not, they're born and raised in Chicago, but I bought them when they were ti- when they were like eight, nine years old. They don't know anything about Chicago. They, all they know, all they know is Glendale Heights and Lombard area. And we do all the shopping in La- in, in Glendale Heights. We're supposed to go to Roseville, right? What if we don't? We come here to the restaurants, we buy here, and if you guys want, I'll save all the receipts. I'll, I'll pull off all my credit card receipts for last six years I've been here, I'll send it to you guys, all the credit card receipts. I bet you ninety-nine percent shopping, I'm living in Lombard, my shopping is Lomb- Glendale, why? Why, why am I doing my shopping in, in Glendale Heights? There gotta be a reason, right? So, did my six years of living here, that taxes? Maybe next time I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna tell Lombard area that I'm gonna switch this. And one more thing, I'm not talking greatness about myself. I sponsored twenty-one families from India. They came in twenty thirteen, they are all in Chicago. I can send you all my immigration papers. Out of twenty-one families, they all want to move in Glendale Heights. I told them, don't, I, I told them, I told them, you know what? I live in Lombard, why don't you move to Lombard? They said, no, we cannot afford it. We cannot, twenty-one families, I'm telling, I'm not just making stories here. I'm not making, I, they are telling me, we want to move. Every cousins, nephews, brothers, sister-in-laws, they all call me and say, brother, uncle. They all tell me, can you please find a place in Glendale Heights for me to move? Can you do something for me? Then, you know what? If this thing happens, I'm not worried about anything. If this thing happens, this plan is gonna change. I'm gonna divert everybody's attention away from Glendale Heights. I'm gonna tell my kids, don't make a left turn in going here, check how in the left turn, no. Go back to Lombard, go back to the city where I'm living. Do in your area, protect your area, do the shopping, give the taxes over there, don't give to anybody else. One more thing, I have one question for you, police officer. You told that you arresting people who are making illegal close to that area, right? Wherever the shop is, right? The, the shop, whatever, you arresting over there, right? Why are the people coming over there? Because you, you're putting honey here, okay? And you're protecting with security cameras. Everybody knows this is protecting, the honey is being protected uh by the so the, the bees is not gonna come because they, security cameras all over their place, right? The bees, so other people know, oh, come here, close to it, you get the honey from here, don't go to the honey. You, if you go to the honey, there's a problem. But you get cheap honey, honey over here, just take it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ramis Chaudry. I live on Valley B Drive, which is a, literally a street uh next to, parallel to the North Avenue. Uh, real quick, as there's a cutout time at eleven P M- Real quick, wondering as there's a cutout time at eleven P M. for this session, is that true?
I have to start new business, not to continue business.
Okay, so we have up until eleven o'clock to, for this issue. Is that correct?
The board can end the meeting at any time, but under, under the rules, no new business can be continued, can be started after eleven o'clock.
Gotcha, okay. Because, you know, I know other people want to talk also, maybe it's a reminder for them, you know, maybe don't, don't repeat things, so be quick. Real quick, I want to thank the police chief for agreeing about the traffic going on west on North Avenue. That is a very serious problem, especially in the morning, and that should be taken into consideration. All the, both the presentation, they talk about the safety of their product and how securing their product and everything in their building. Nobody talks about the security outside, the security of the kids in the neighborhood or cars coming in and out, things like that. There's a drive-through for Dunkin Donuts right there for that Army Trail location as well. Last presentation last week, they, they did their best to explain how the delivery and everything is going to be smooth, but we don't believe that is going to go as smooth. There's a news about Spalding Park behind the North Avenue location is going to turn into a school as well. I know that school is not in five hundred feet of this building. But the question is, are homeschools, do they apply the same rules? I know some people who have homeschool, homeschooling their kids in that neighborhood. Can this facility be opened within five year, five hundred miles? Homeschools don't matter, huh?
It does not impact.
Okay. But kids are around there, whether they homeschool or not, you know, not repeating everything what everyone said. That's all, you know, I just want to raise my voice against both the locations coming into Glendale Heights. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Riyazuddin Muhammad. I live on Burdette Avenue in Glendale Heights. So as he said, I won't repeat things about the traffic and the other things. However, I want to emphasize on one thing. We are, both the parties have emphasized and highlighted the fact, as Adam said, the fact that how dangerous this business is. There is a reason why so much of investment has been made on the security, which is obvious. There's no, there's not much currency there. There is the material that is more dangerous and the harms of it. So basically, they are magnifying and emphasizing the fact that today that seed that they are sowing, even though it's a small stem, it is so important to them and they are focusing and showing us how that has been protected. But in a few years, we'll see the same stem becoming a huge tree, which all of us here will be busy taking care of it. All of us will be busy trying to make sure that that doesn't grow so much that comes in the harms way of each and every young child that is growing up and you're making it so easily accessible for the neighborhood that is mostly, you know, family oriented and all the commercial, the residential area, and you're just handing out like candy, making it accessible to the children. And does Glendale Heights really think it's worth to jeopardize the lives of our teenagers and our youth and our children for this amount of money? Are we not paying enough taxes that can accommodate this? Are we, are we running, running behind these kind of businesses right in the neighborhood? Okay, as someone said, go in the warehouses and do the businesses. You know, that is a place where it should be, but not in the, in the right, in the midst of those children that are playing, who are coming in the harms way of these people and, and the traffic and all those things that has been already laid out. So I would request this board, you have one opportunity to upload this, this stem and throw it away before it becomes a problem and hangs in our neck. Thank you.
Sir, one second. I just want to get on the record a email that came in from a resident. The line continues to just keep going. So, dear respected board, my name is Shama Ahmed. I live at one North, four forty-five Eastern Avenue in Glen Ellen. Thank you for allowing me to submit my comments today. As a resident in the neighborhood right behind the proposed site, I object to the North Avenue Cannabis Dispensary. As a parent, it scares me tremendously. I'm worried about the negative impacts of increased and dangerous traffic. The trickle-down effect of cannabis use and the negative atmosphere it will bring to our neighborhood. The entrance to the proposed site would be on Glen Rise Avenue, which is one of the main in and out roads to our subdivision. North Avenue is already, is already a very busy street. Our neighborhood is full of children and families playing and walking outside. This makes them especially vulnerable to drivers who may be under the influence or simply in a rush for a shortcut through our neighborhood. While I understand the use of cannabis for medical purposes, I worry about the recreational use and transaction of cannabis so close to our homes. And while I understand it is legal, it is not good for the community. I urge the board to strongly consider the factor of harmony with the neighborhood when making this decision and how the dispensary will affect people who are trying to raise safe families. Thank you.
I also have a few comments on Zoom, our house from Abu Abdullah. Our house is on Alpine Drive. We don't want these kind of businesses close to my home. We're raising our kids in this beautiful village. We don't want this thing in Glendale Heights. I also have Naz Mules, excuse me. I live in Glendale Heights. Last year, I moved here because of the good school districts, quiet and nice neighborhoods and low crime, even though I have to pay as high as eleven thousand dollars in taxes. I really oppose it. Please raise your voices and give your comment who are watching it on Zoom. Thank you. Fatima, Fatima, thank you for being patient. She says we are opposed to opening cannabis dispensaries in Glendale Heights. It's detrimental for our youth, and I actually want to give Fatima an opportunity to speak.
Hello, everyone. I'm really pleased to be part of this meeting. And I am a resident of Lombard Glen Ellen, and that's where my family is, that's where my home is. And currently, I'm studying in Malaysia, turning all the way from here. And despite that thirteen hours difference, I found it necessary to be part of this meeting, to be able to voice out my concern, to be able to tell how much this will negatively impact us as a community. And as everyone has mentioned earlier, that as a student of economics, I want you all to consider the negative externalities of having a cannabis dispensary right in your neighborhood. It will affect, you know, the little children negatively. What about the secondhand smokers that have nothing to do with it, the people who are affected by the traffic? The peaceful community members that are just trying to live in peace and, and raise a good family. So, you know, it's legal, but it's also very harmful. Like the chief said, he's not, he's opposed to it. He would not do it. So my, 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 my request to you all to think is that if you wouldn't like it for yourselves, for your children, then how would you allow a community that's all raising their voice against it, to be part of it and to be affected by it? I really, really thank you for, for listening to my opinion, and I hope that the board can vote against. Thank you very much.
I also have Amir.
Thank you for giving me a chance, and I commend all the people staying this late and discussing this important topic. I'm a physician, and there are at least two other E R physicians in our neighborhood. Countless of times, we've seen teenagers come to the E R with problems with addiction and problem with marijuana. In this community where people will be coming in, buying these products, are not only going to keep to themselves, they're going to give it to other kids. And there are kids in this community who are coming from far abroad to this religious institute, who are teenagers, who will be inflicted by these things. And they're far away from their parents in different states at the same time will be inflicted by this neighborhood. So I urge everybody else to kind of vote against this as much as possible. Thank you.
I have Mohammed Chowdhury.
Hi, this is Mohammed Chowdhury. I live in Coventry Circle, behind the Menards, around the north avenue. So I strongly oppose the idea of cannabis recreational stores in our town. I don't think that there is enough demand for this medicine or this be in our community. And I feel that this is an effort to create a business and create the client base in our community. And I do not want those clients and the users of cannabis in my neighborhood. My kids are, and kids of my neighbors. So that's why I strongly oppose this. Thank you.
And I also have Abdul Sayed. Abdul. I have a comment from Hafiz Mirza. He's concerned about traffic problems coming from east of North Avenue, turning left onto Glen Rise. And he's requesting that the board vote against both the cannabis dispensaries. Amatul Sayeda moved all the way from Austin to Glendale Heights in two thousand nineteen. We, I assume she and her family love this village and we call it home. Our children enjoy here so much. The village is so peaceful. Please let it be so. Do not let these distractions ruin our peace. I have Shaquille. I live in Carroll Stream. To Dr. Patel, you should be for wellness of health, not for destroying health. You said you want respect and said we came to your community for support. The truth is just say, we came here to destroy your community. Shaheed Wazir. We moved to Glendale Heights about a year ago, mainly to raise our kids, three young kids in this beautiful community. We strongly oppose marijuana dispensaries coming to our community. Tariq or Tarek, excuse me, I'm from Greenbrier subdivision of Glendale Heights. I strongly oppose these businesses opening in our town. This would definitely bring all the unwanted people in our neighborhood, which as a community, we don't want to see it. I humbly request to all the board members to please throw out this and save our town. Thank you. Patty, I live behind the proposed location. I oppose the location on North Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue. My family's main concern is the traffic issue on Glen Rise. It is already incredibly difficult to turn onto North Avenue from Glen Rise. Are there any requirements about the location being on the boundary of the village?
No.
No. This would impact the neighbors behind the location on North Avenue in unincorporated Glen Ellen. Fatima, again, I have about seven more comments. I do apologize.
Is it the same person?
Yes, so skip her.
Yeah, if she's already made her comment, she probably gets one shot.
I have someone who's not identified themselves. It just says iPhone. I live very close to North Avenue location. Can you ask Dr. Patel if she smokes marijuana? I am sure she doesn't. I am sure she doesn't. She is here only for business and not thinking about our community and our kids. And those are the comments that I have.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Fayaz Dave. I'm residence of Glen Ellen on Forest Avenue. I have four grandkids living on Glen Rise Avenue, just behind the proposed facility. I am a retired I D A T resident engineer. I spent entire life on the road. So I can give you a different perspective what the rest of the people said. When I joined I D A T, the first thing they told me was that more construction people die on the road than the police officers, and that's the fact. And now, why these people die? Because of the rash driving, drunk driving, you know? And those people who are dying on the road, they are inside the barricades. And now, with this new facility coming in an area where there is no street light and the sunset will be four thirty, and these people will be driving on a dark street at nighttime. Hi, what do you expect? You know, and North Avenue, North Avenue is not a common road. It's an expressway. Seven o'clock, go on an expressway, three fifty-five, the cars are prowling. Go on North Avenue, they are speeding. Officer can tell you that about that. And we want these people to drive on North Avenue every day. And this community is such a safe neighborhood. And by exposing this community to such businesses and putting the lives of the young kids at risk and by approving, approving this, you will be responsible if anything goes bad in the neighborhood. And, and remember that. This, this facility on North Avenue is out of your town. You can give permission right in the heart of Glendale Heights. I have no problem. We are living, we are Glen Ellen people. We see the sheriffs once in six months in our street. Who's going to control that area? Are, are these officers are going to stay there to monitor the traffic? No, they will know they are, it is outside their area. So by approving this for certain amount of money, you know, three hundred thousand bucks for a village where people are moving from all over the country, is this worth it? Think over it. Think about the safety of the kids. Thank you.
My name is Nasir Beg, and I live four blocks away from the seven thirty-nine North location. I moved here one year ago, and if I would have seen any marijuana shop, I would have never moved. The second thing, my son is eleven-year-old. When I pick him up this, from the school around four, he doesn't even come to the home. He just runs away to his friend's house, which is Valley V Drive and the Glen Rise, which is one block away. Now, do you think your kids or your grandkids, if you know he's playing one block away from the marijuana shop, would you allow him to do that? That, because, and the other thing, you already heard about the traffic problem taking left or right. That's always an officer already agree with that. And there is another thing, this Glen Rise Street is not straight street. It's go up and down. So if any unfamiliar person come to and take a ride, he doesn't know it. If you speed up more than twenty, it can hit because it goes up and then it come down. So this is come, this, all the traffic issue will make unsafe for our kids. I would advise you to come to in the evening and see the neighborhood, how many kids are playing there. And when this, this place comes, that will mess up whole neighborhood. Thank you. I would like to one add thing. So in the beginning, the kids ask you, all of you the question, how you become? And you say people elected it. Now, people elected for what? For their good, to make their people, people elected you to make their neighborhood safe. People elected you to listen to them, not to the, the business outside from the community come and put the marijuana shop and make this neighborhood unsafe. So I would like you to think about as your own neighborhood, like your grandson, your grandkid, for them. This is not the right location. How can someone can open the marijuana shop one block, one block away from the, like a, like a quiet neighborhood? So I request you guys to think. I know this is like, you know, within the guidelines and all that. But at the end of the day, I would like you to listen to your consequences, think as a family person and make the decision. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ohai Man. I'm a thirteen-years-old. I would never have thought that a thirteen-year-old had to tell adults not to do marijuana or promote it in our communities. What is the benefit of that kind of revenue when children's future are at stake because children my age are the future of this community? When you, when you, when you know this product will be bad, why would you provide the platform to have one? Thank you.
Hey, my name is Wasi Khan, and I'm a resident of Glen Ellen. My address is one N five four zero, River Drive, Glen Ellen. And I have these seven copies for the board members. Thank you so much. We did a little survey around the Edison dispensary with the businesses and people living around it. And I have not heard a single positive word from those businesses or people living or working there. Everybody is unhappy, mad about the, this business, about the traffic they have there, their business value when Their business value went down. And this is what we are expecting, that our neighborhood with 400 houses, our value will go down about what? Let's say 50,000 or 100,000? That will cost us what? $4 billion to our 400 neighbors. $4 billion. And city is making it from one dispensary, about 275,000 a year? It will take about 145 years to make up that $4 billion, which we will lose in one year just like that. You guys just don't care about it. If you want 275,000 a year, you have 34,000 houses in this Glendale Heights. Divide that 34,000, 275,000 to every household here, it will cost them $8. $8, just $8. Increase the tax, you will get your money. $15, if you remove, you take away, you don't just open up any dispensary, just increase $15 in the taxes of every single home, they will be happy to pay instead of taking care of or living with this mess. Also, in our neighborhood, 400 houses, insurance will definitely go up. So if $100 a year, we will be paying about 40,000 a year to the insurance company, making them rich. So in 145 years, they will be making $6 million from us, from our pocket, for the insurance company. For the location here and next to Dunkin' Donuts, we all know what Dunkin' Donuts is all about. Every kid, even every single person is happy to go to that, to any Dunkin' Donut. We all go happily. We bring, Dunkin' Donuts bring a smile to all of our faces. America runs on Dunkin'. I'm not promoting them, but this is what they promote. And yes, we agree that America runs on Dunkin'. Everybody looks for Dunkin', they go to Dunkin', buy their smiles. So imagine opening up a dancing bar next to a temple or church or a mosque. This is what we are doing here. Cannabis store right next to the Dunkin' Donut, where kids go all day long. They'll be seeing what? They'll be buying the Dunkin', next, it's standing next to the cannabis store? That's ridiculous. So my message to this Patel family, they have been in Dunkin' Donut business, they've been spreading a smile. Keep doing that. Don't come to this business. Please, please. I plead them, don't come to this business. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I can have one last email that came in. My name is Sandal Ishake, I think. I live very close to proposed North Avenue dispensary site. I want to oppose a business in my community affecting the peace and safety of my neighborhood. I will worry regarding safety of my children playing in the neighborhood as they ride their bikes. This is unincorporated Glen Allen with little to no lighting, no sidewalk. There will be no police presence from Glendale Heights or Glen Allen enforcing any right-only signs. I strongly oppose the dispensary. Thank you, Sandal Ishake.
Sir, has nobody spoken?
Not for this issue.
You have not spoken on this topic?
Hmm. Can I?
If you haven't spoke, you...
Sure. It was for a different topic. It was for Western Avenue.
Yeah, it was for Western Avenue.
Yeah. Okay, my name is Kesar Jyoti. Again, I think I will not go into details, but I will just say that whatever the community members have said, I do agree with that. And I also request you to, like, not to support opening any location for cannabis in our town. And I think you have been in the meetings, all of, like, many of trustees have been in these positions for many, many years. You can see that even with, by requesting multiple times, you may have seen, nobody shows up to the meeting, very less people show up. So this is some issue which has impacted the community, that they have come not only to the, here on the Zoom, by emails. They are giving us the feedback. And they're sitting here for the past three, four hours and listening quietly and giving their valuable feedback to you because you are our representatives. And we believe that you will make a decision which will help this town and the community. And this will also either reassure us that we will support you in the future, or like, we have to think about from that perspective. The business is here. If they don't get an opportunity to open here, they can go some, open somewhere else. But you are representing us, so please keep our feedback in your mind when you're making the final decision. Thank you so much.
I have an AA. My request to the board is to assess the pros versus the cons. How many people are voting against it? Is there anyone who said they are for it? Please consider. I have Nazia Fatima. My request to the board to, oh, same question. Danish, hi, my name is Arif Khan, oh, surprise. From 355 Evergreen Circle, Glendale Heights. Moved here five years ago. I strongly oppose to the opening of marijuana store on North Avenue. Heard about traffic issues, even if applicant offers to budget an overpass or underpass or add four additional lanes to North Avenue, I would still oppose. This is not about religion or religious places close to this area. This is about Glendale Heights people and its character. The applicant also said she wanted to help schools, mosques, and churches. I don't think any religious organizations would welcome money from a business which earns by ruining lives. I have Ahmad Ali. I am a resident of Glendale Heights. I'm opposed to the opening of the cannabis dispensary in our village. Let's keep the city clean. I vote against this and appreciate the opportunity to be part of this issue. If we need businesses, let's invite more restaurants instead. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Azhar Mohammed. I have been resident of Glendale Heights for about 10 years now. I stand here tonight as a father of four young girls, ages from 11 to four. And there are a couple of reasons I'm standing here. And just for the record, I oppose both the locations. And I regularly shop at the location proposed in the Bloomingdale, next to AL. My wife, my kids, they go there regularly. And I'm really concerned about the safety of my family with this kind of dispensaries opening in Glendale Heights. One point I would like to make is, in the past 10 years, I don't know if you guys have noticed, especially in last two years, they have tons of families moving into Glendale Heights neighborhood. And I know many of them which have been moving from New Jersey, California, Texas, New York. I have three brothers I can point out who are my close family. I have been a close proponent of Glendale Heights. One moved from New York, the other moved from St. Louis, Missouri. And the reason I'm bringing this point here is, there are certain institutions in this neighborhood of Glendale Heights Lombard. They've been working really hard to make a brand of this neighborhood, in a manner where it is appealing for families to come here and raise their children. And that is the biggest selling point for Glendale Heights right now. And there are a lot of people who are trying to move in because of this. And you have got a brand on your sleeve. Do not ruin that with allowing such dispensaries to be here. That's one point. The other point I was trying to make is, like I said, I have been here for close to 10 years. This is the first time I am here, standing and talking to exercise my civic duty. This issue is very close to my heart, and not just my heart. I can assure you and promise you, there are hundreds and thousands watching right now. And they are watching each one of you and see how you're gonna vote. Because based on that, you're gonna know what's gonna happen. That's just my last point. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. This is Mohammed Mortuja. I live in 1792 Arlington Lane. I don't want to take a time, it's already more than 11 o'clock. So just quick, you know, means, all of the residents here, you know, they should raise their voice. Well enough, you know, and basically, they left nothing to, you know, I can add on it. One of the things I always am proud about the Glendale Heights as a resident, I mean, more than 10 years. And the oldest time, someone, there's a lot of people I know who actually asks where is a good place to, you know, to actually move in, you know? And all the time, I tell them to come to the Glendale Heights. There is a multiple reasons because of the, there's a mosque here, and there is a, there's a family, my, all the time, when he asks my family, you know, is it, we want to continue staying in the Glendale Heights or move out? You know, this is, they want to stay here, you know? So it is actually very important, the here, the residents, you know, their concern, and I, when I came in a few times, I have never seen that, the so many, so many people come for the, for the, for the, for any kind of issues, you know? So it is my humble request to the board, you know, to take a look. I'm actually, I don't want to see any store open up like this, which is cause the, cause the community concern. And just to, also, I want to, means, I'm also the Dupes Democrat Party, I'm the vice chair, you know, means, I'm actually, from there, from the party side, I'm also supporting the, all of the residents, they have a concern, you know? Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sayed Kazmi. I'm living in 656 Porter Avenue, Glendale Heights. Hi, Honorable Jury Officers. I want to emphasize on that, you know, why this is a dirty business. Addiction is a dirty thing. And we are talking about some bringing addictive peoples in our town. I was thinking why these two locations was significant. If you see that the location, both locations, Army Trail and Bloomingdale location and North Avenue one, right? Both are the closest to the junction, highway junction, 355, you know, to, which is coming from the north to south, and the 290 junction, right? So we are inviting the peoples from all over the Chicago and the north side and the south side to buy this addictive drug. So we are expecting addictive peoples in our town from all northeast, south places. That's all. And we have to think about what kind of, you know, traffic we are going to have. And I believe that it's going to be created chaos in our community. And our generation is going to be in danger because of these two businesses. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mas Chodri, and I am 11-years-old. I live on Valley View Drive, 22W 029 Valley View Drive, Glen Allen. I do not want this mess in my neighborhood because I always put on the sheet with my friends. And I do not want to be put in danger and inside my neighborhood. And I feel scared sometimes. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Sir, you would be the last speaker then?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Ashak Rahman. I live on Slaton Lane in Glendale Heights. I've been here since 2007. The people ahead of me have reiterated the fear and the reasons of principally opposed to granting these permits to any of these establishments who have no roots in our community. One of the things I want to pick up on, the gentleman who said about addiction, yes, that we are essentially considering increasing supply to a highly addictive substance in our community. So we saw very great plans about security, about access, about traffic. However, I didn't see any plans about funding the need for additional rehab or counseling centers that Glendale Heights will need in the future as a result of increasing the addiction rate in our community. So please keep that in mind.
So being 11:15 at this point, the petitioners, I believe, are gonna want some time to respond. So I believe it'd be appropriate at this time to continue the hearing, or not the hearing, to continue the agenda item until next meeting and to adjourn the meeting, if that's what the committee, the whole desires to do. I just think because of late hour, I don't think it's appropriate to give them this time to respond at this time. Okay. Mahana?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Chester?
Definitely.
Mary?
No, I want to say something. May I?
Sure. We're not at that point, Mary. We're just whether we're gonna decide whether to continue this matter until what was the date of?
We definitely would like to...
Two weeks from today. I'm gonna ask everybody to please be quiet. This is at the committee level now. The public is no longer involved. Okay. What would be the next date?
It's November 4th, I believe.
So if there's a motion to continue this agenda item until the committee, the whole meeting of November 4th?
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
Wait, make sure.
November 3rd.
November 3rd. Okay, is there a motion? Trustee Light?
I make a motion to continue this meeting on November 3rd.
The two agenda items were...
The two agenda items for the dispensary.
Trustee Pojek?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
What are we having a roll call vote on?
To continue the hearing.
On November 3rd.
November 3rd.
Yes. Continue the agenda.
Does that mean I can't speak first?
We're wrote on this now.
All right. I'll vote yes.
Can we, are we also moving the cricket one, two?
Those could be added on. Those are just discussion.
Everything that's currently on the COW will be at, will be continued to November 3rd.
November, okay. So we will be adjourned after this?
Right.
If we...
You would adjourn after this?
Yeah, we're adjourned after this.
Yes, okay. That's fine.
We have a motion on the floor. I don't speak.
Did someone make a motion?
Yes, we have a motion.
And it was second.
And...
Okay, now we have a discussion. So, Mary, you could talk at this time about the continuation.
We started to vote.
Did you start to vote or...
Yes.
We started to vote.
It's so late, I can't remember anymore.
I know. I'm sorry. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Is there, we need a motion to adjourn?
We did, we just did.
That was a motion to continue.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Siddiqui, trustee, okay.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Trustee Light. Trustee Siddiqui, second. Do we need a roll call vote or a voice vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Adjourned.
I really wanted to say something to these people. All right, even though the meeting is adjourned, I want you to know, I agree with everything you said. I did not vote for the cannabis. I thought it was the bad thing from the very beginning. All right? We are here to represent you. You didn't want it, we shouldn't have voted for it. This is my thoughts. And as long as we're off the record, I just want to say this. I don't think these people that call in should be heard when these people take the time to come. I think if somebody has something to say, they should come here and say it. Nicole, I'm not saying that you were wrong, you're doing what you're supposed to. But I think that if you had something to say, come here and tell us. Don't talk to us on the phone. These people were sitting here, listening to what they had to say while they're sitting in their house. And I think that they should be here, just like you were.